We're good to go.
All right, and with that, I will call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, November 24th, 2020. All members are participating remotely and the meeting is being recorded. As an initial matter, if anything happens tonight where we can't complete this hearing, anything that has not been completed will be administratively moved to December 1st next Tuesday. But hopefully that won't happen. So first of all, is there anyone here to speak to anything that is not on tonight's agenda? We will have public comment for the two applications that are pending, but if there's anything not on the agenda that someone would like to speak to, you can either raise your virtual hand or turn on your camera and raise your actual hand or star nine on a cellphone, I think, or even just unmute and ask to address us. And I don't see anything. So moving right along to the first continuing public hearing for Cynthia Stepler, seeing a special permit and stormwater management permit under section 8.3 and 12.7 of zoning ordinance and 12-76 of the city ordinance. Property located at 69 and 73 Loudville Road and is in the R35 zoning district. So we did get some late breaking submissions from the applicant today. Hopefully, planning board members have had a chance to look at it. But Rob or Jessica, is there someone who wants to walk us through what we got here tonight? And maybe some other stuff if there's stuff coming?
Yep, thank you. Good evening. For the record, I'm Rob Lebec from our Lebec Associates. With me tonight is Jessica Allen, also from our Lebec Associates. Also on the line is Cynthia Stepler and I believe John Stepler. So at the last planning board meeting, you had requested that we provide detailed architecturals, which seemed prudent. There was some discussion about, you know, the potential for discrepancies between the footprints and what we had proposed. Our initial approach was to work with schematics and then, you know, upon approval, provide architecturals. But we understand the approach requested and have secured architectural plans, elevations from Chris Carey, who's a local architect. And what he did is he basically took the models that we were thinking of and essentially clarified them and put together elevations with dimensions on them. So what you see before you tonight, and we have a bunch of different sheets that you probably looked at, but we wanted to make sure we were detailing each of the models that we're proposing. So we have what I would call the double single, for lack of a better term, what you're looking at now, which is the duplex unit with the two single car garages. We'll call that the double single. You're looking at the top view, which gives, if you can just zoom in on the elevation, I'm sorry, on the dimensions. So we have a couple of different dimensions because we didn't want any confusion with regard to footprint versus soffit versus, you know, any of the details. So we provide a 66 or 66-foot overall dimension with a 64-foot, we'll call foundation dimension. As you look at the front of the unit and the front elevation. If we go down to the side views, we're about 53 feet and that would be from the front porch to the back wall of the unit. Please note that there are some, you know, different pieces of the unit that are slightly different, just the jigs and jogs, but, you know, to give an overall dimension. With based on the foundation, we have that dimension and then up above. So we have the 53, the lower dimension, and then up above, we have 56 feet, eight and eight and a half inches. And let's zoom for a zoom screen here. So you'll see that that goes from basically outer, you know, outside of the roof itself. So just to clarify, we didn't want any confusion if we're measuring, you know, if someone's measuring from one portion of the building versus the other. We also do have footprints that we'll show you, but we'll just zoom out here. I'll show you the back of the unit. So this bottom of the page would be the back of the unit. And you can see that there's separate, there's porches that come off the back of each of the units. And that has been, that also has dimensions between, it's the same as the front, obviously, but I don't know why I'm not seeing it on that sheet. But it's up above at the 64, 64 and 66. So that's the back of the unit working at the porches and, you know, the windows. Basically, that's five second done. If we could go to the next one. Okay, so this, there we go. We're going to call this the double single. The double single is a double on one side and a single on the other. We think that this is a possibility, so we wanted to make sure that we had it shown. That is a total width of about 72 feet, two inches, with a total width at the foundation, I say 75 feet, two inches at the top, and then 73, two inches at the bottom. If we just zoom out ever so slightly on that. Thank you. And then side view, very similar to the other one with the corresponding dimensions shown on the right side elevation of 55 eight at the top and 53 eight at the bottom. Just different dimensions to different portions of the building, just to clarify. And then the rear, that's the same thing for the rear. The difference being that one of those units in the back, the difference being that one of those units is the is the single and one of those units is the double. Scrolling down. So we have a double double. And that would be a duplex with two car garages. This would be the biggest unit that we're proposing. This is again back in the rear portion of the project. We have reduced the front portion of the project to the single double. The first unit that I showed. So there's two, there's two different buildings that are the single double at the beginning. So that was the first page, but this is the double double. These would be the double units with the two car garages. And that has a total width of 84 from, and I think that's, we zoom out from the roof line. Yep, and the approximately, also it's 82 from the foundation. I just do want to point out, just so no one thinks we missed it or it's not clear, there's little bump outs on either side of the building for windows, but those, there's no foundation in those, so those are can't be moved out. So just wanted to clarify that those are there. And scrolling down, we have the units with the right side elevation dimension as well. Again, 55 eight at the top, 53 eight at the bottom. So they're all generally the same, the same with the back. And then we'll see the three porches off the backside of these units. We have footprints, I believe, in here that all correspond to the same, showing the roof lines and the dimensions from certain portions of the building. Generally speaking, this would be the double double, which has the 84 to the roof line and then the 82 to the foundation wall. And then as well as the 55 eight or whatever the specific dimensions are on the side, all corresponding to the elevations that you see. Here we have the single, we do have one single unit in the back. So this would be the single single. And this would pretty much be 43, five at the roof line, 41, five at the foundation, also with a little bit of a bump out, cantilevered off the left side there. And then the, the, go to the right side elevations, the mention 55 eight again and 53 eight at the foundation wall. So we've been able to update these. There were minor changes to the, to our site plan. That's what, one of the late, late breaking items you talked about. So we wanted to make sure that everything matched up between the elevations, the footprints and our site plan. So there was some, some minor adjustments to the, the small single units are slightly deeper. They're overall, they're generally smaller in dimensions in living area than we were anticipating, based on the architecturals and details from the architect. The other units, I believe, we were showing them that this would be the double double units, maybe the 10 and 11 or any of those other units. We were showing them, I believe, as 84 wide and they're actually 82 wide at the foundation, which are slightly smaller and the living areas are smaller than proposed on our, than shown on our analysis. But we're able to kind of clean up the details. And this is, you know, this is something that can be set in stone in the decision that we can all kind of hang our hat on and corresponds with the site plan, with the elevation and with the footprint from the architect. Within the buildings, we don't know exactly what type of arrangement they might want. Some people might not want to finish the second floor. Some people may, there might be some sort of variability in that living area. But generally speaking, the living area is based on the plans provided by the architect. But I think there, if the decision is rendered, it should be that, that living area, so to speak, should be, you know, as long as the unit is as proposed, there will be, within that, if they, you know, they change a closet or do something. We would expect some level of variability in the building, but obviously that's, you know, it's more of a, you know, building code issue and would, would not affect the structure of the building or the scale or the architectural features. So with that, I don't think there were any other major changes. So I'd be, that's out there and happy to answer any questions you have.
So Rob, just to be clear, actually, can you put that back up? Thanks, Jessica. So I just wanted to be clear. So unit one is already constructed, right? That's Miss Stepler's current residence.
Correct.
And two and three will be single singles. And four and five as well, right?
That is correct.
And 16 is only going to be a single. And as far as the other ones, the flex, I just want to be clear about what exactly the flexibility is you're looking for. So on the other ones that, that aren't set in stone, so to speak, what's shown on this plan is a double double for each of those units. And any, any deviation would only be smaller and would be within those footprints that are shown on this plan.
Yes, so just to clarify, and you're absolutely right, just to clarify for the record, we would request that six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, skipping 16, and then 17, 18 could all be reduced to either a double single or a single sing, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Reduced to a
A double and a single or a single and a single?
Thank you.
But within, what, within the footprint of these, where they're laid out here?
Absolutely. Be closer to the road. We would, we would just be within the footprint and it would, essentially, it's the same depth on all of these. So it would really just be a narrower unit if that was the case.
Okay.
narrower building, we should say, if that was the case.
Any questions from planning board members? Don't see any, okay. Any questions or comments from the planning department?
Jesse, I
Oh, sorry, Chris, yeah.
So we talked as well at the last meeting about square footages and I see you had some square footage calculations on your, on your elevations. Are those, is that the total square footage of the first floor only or does that include the second floor?
That includes the second floor, Chris, but I believe there's some variability in how the second floor gets built out. So we would, you know, we would like to be able to have some flexibility. Oftentimes, there would be a single, like a single unit on the, I'm sorry, a single bedroom on the second story. Sometimes they don't get built out at all. So there would be flexible, there would be some authority in the, in the construction of that, potentially the construction of that second story.
Right, and so at the last meeting, we had a table that you created that had, or a list of buildings you created that had, from the assessor's office, the square footages, the livable square footages for each of the homes in the area.
Yep.
So do you have something similar to share now that you've figured out the square footages of these buildings? That we could compare apples to apples?
Yep, we have this, so we have the same information that was provided. However, our unit is slightly smaller in terms of the overall footprint and the, the livable or the living area as provided by the architect. So I think we can bring that other document up and then compare the new numbers to that.
And the document you're providing is for the full building you, living space, correct? Not just the unit, but the full building square footage, correct?
That's correct, you're correct. The, the full building living space is shown just under the
For two units, for the two unit structures, thank you.
And then the single unit is Yeah, so that's
So I'm sorry, I'm still confused. So if we're looking at the chart, we were looking at gross area square feet. If you go back one page. There you go, stop right there. So if I'm reading this correctly, the, the double double unit, the square footage of each unit is, what, 20?
250.
250 each. So what's the gross area square footage of one of those buildings? That's what we're looking for, so it's apples to apples on that chart.
Yeah, I think what we have is what was provided by the architect is a living, barefooted, I'm sorry, the living area.
Which is also on this analysis. So there is a living area provided on each of these analysis. And if you, and if you, if you compare what was provided by the architect in terms of living area and look at the living areas within the comparison area, it still fits within the range. There are still units within this area that are larger than even the double double.
Yeah, can you just, um,
We can go side by side.
So, so can you just go back to the first page with the listing of the gross? That's something you developed because I had presented living area and you countered with the gross area. So all you have to do is add the attic and the garages because we know the living area is about, what, 5,000?
No, 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 no. The living area for the, for the, for the double double unit is 2558. That's for both units.
You mean one unit is 1,200 square feet?
Correct, the singleton is 1,290.
So hold on, so the one, the double double, one unit is 1,200 square feet and you're hoping to get $400,000 for that in East Hampton? Ah.
We're getting $400,000 for the southward.
I, I looked at comps on 359 Main Street and the ones selling for 400,000 are two car garages with, what, 2,500 square feet, a unit? I mean, you're not, you're not going to get 400,000 for 1,200 square feet.
The market will dictate what the price is.
Yeah.
When they're put on those, I mean, it's not, it's almost not part of the discussion in terms of its marketability, I don't believe. Because really, the market will drive it when the market, when these go on the market, which could be several years from now. And who knows what the market could be in several years from now.
Yeah, but you said that's what you needed to get to make the project feasible. So I would think you'd want to design something in the ballpark.
So we are, so I've probably permitted definitely over a thousand units last decade. If you're intimately familiar with this process and with the sales, bring up a comp for you if you'd like for these units.
No, I believe you, I just, I mean, so, okay. So what we could do is in the conditions, we could say each unit is about 1,200 square feet of living heated space. Is that, you would be okay with that?
So to my point, I think the scale and the, you know, the discussion that we've had and the, the changes that we've made related to the units are related to how they fit into the neighborhood. Whether somebody want, there is a, we'll call it a gable roof up there. You know, without changing any of the structure of the building, if somebody wants to, you know, for example, go over the garage or do something with a studio or a study or something like that, I don't think we would want to restrict that. But I think if there's a way for us to, you know, make sure that the structure doesn't change. I mean, I don't know why we would want to, you know, if somebody wants to change a closet, attic, take one away.
Sure.
I think you'll find that most people that are going to be buying these are not necessarily, you know, it would be cheaper for them to buy if they're not finishing off second floor space. Some of them might leave it framed, you know, or drywalled and not finish it off. I've seen that quite a bit, actually. So I don't know what the percentages, but I would expect that, that, you know, I think it would be prudent to provide enough flexibility that they can build out their interior unit the way they want, if they can, as long as it meets the, you know, the requirements.
Yeah, I think, I think the concern for the board is the size of the structure itself and the, the allocation within it is less of a concern as far as our task of determining whether it fits in the character of the neighborhood. Like, I guess that's the part that's truly relevant for this analysis.
Well, I mean, the math I was trying to, because we're kind of, we have to use our own judgment and discretion to ascertain the facts of what is scale. And without taking a three-year course in architecture, you know, so we were, we were talking about square footage as a way to, to take some factual information between what's in the neighborhood and then what is represented by these new buildings. So that's, I'm a little disappointed. I thought we were pretty clear that we were looking for that gross square footage comparison. You know, and so I'm still not clear how big these buildings are. You really can't provide a gross square footage?
We requested it from the architect, but he provided us with the living area.
And there's some variability with the calculation for gross square footage, I'm assuming. So you can determine how big the buildings are. We do have the dimensions, so, and they haven't really changed. It, I mean, arguably, they're a little bit smaller, but the elevations and the footprints that we've been talking about since the beginning of the project are arguably, you know, if anything, we've reduced back as we, as we've mentioned. So we were, we heard the board, we understand your concern about tying this into the neighborhood. We reduced those units to the smaller size, still, we think will be marketable. Single singles, or sorry, double singles. So I think we have everything that to determine, I think the question last time, at least the way I understood it was, you know, do these match up with the elevations? And because the elevations weren't fully developed, arguably, you had a good, very good point. So we provided these with the detail and confirmed all of the dimensions and they were slightly different from our plan. They're a little bit bigger in most cases, but we, we pulled our, you know, we pulled them in and tightened things up. But, you know, arguably, an imperceivable difference when you're looking at the site plan, but now it's super tight and we can feel comfortable knowing that these buildings match the site plans and that these are what they're planning on building. And, you know, the overall height and then planned dimensions are all shown in a couple of different locations.
Well, I mean, the problem remains what you gave us in your analysis to try to demonstrate that these buildings were in keeping with the neighborhood. It was based on your data. You know, we were asking for an apples to apples comparison of the largest building and you didn't provide that. I mean,
Well, we did. You do, you do, you do have it still, the information is just not in a chart, so
Okay, tell me, just tell me what the gross square footage, the largest gross square footage of the largest building is, could be.
I can tell you what the living area is for every unit in the, in the, in the, in the description area. That's what I can do and we can do a comparison based on that.
That's not helpful because what you already provided us, you were the ones that switched the argument from living to gross and now you want to switch it back to living. So I'm just getting really confused about where we are.
So
You, you must be able to just calculate the gross square footage of the largest building.
So just, let's just do some, some quick rough math, right?
Okay.
So the first, so the first floor area, so gross area, actually, I'm, I'm not going to get into trying to figure out. I don't have the data to, to put gross theory on this. I would have to rely on the architect and I'm not going to, I don't want to speak out of school. I just, I believe this is exactly what we're asked for. We have, we have the the living area that is very specific to the neighborhood. In the gross area, we've already, you know, generally provided for, I mean, I mean, Miss Stepler's house alone is 6,000 square feet. I mean, we're, if we compare and we can look at the, look at the footprints and whatnot, I mean, I, I don't think.
I mean, how do the other board members, am I like?
No, I, I agree with you, Brenda. I think, you know, if, if, I mean, if you want to take a rough guess at it, you have a 55 foot by 84 foot building, that's 400, 4,620 square feet. If it's a, if it's a one and a half story building, then you assume the half, you assume, say, multiply it by 1.5 to get the second, half a floor on the second floor of potential livable space. So you're up at about, clear, 84 times 55 times 1.5, you're at about 6,900 square feet. And that would be probably the max. It might probably be even a little bit less than that. So if you look at the table, there, there are some buildings there that are around 6,000 gross square footage. So it's not terribly off. That would include the second floor as potential livable space in the future.
Well, but gross square footage includes basement and attic, so you have to, and garage.
Yeah, I was, I was adding garage and attic, but I wasn't doing basement.
So I just, I, I don't understand what's going on.
Well, I think, Brenda, I think that we had, one of the, there were two reasons I think that we were looking for more detail. And one was, we literally felt at the last meeting, like we didn't know exactly what we would be approving if we approved anything, right? And so I think that we now have that. We have a clearer picture of what the structures that the applicant is asking for would look like in size and scale. I think the information that, the other reason we were looking for that information was to maybe be able to more carefully compare it to the other properties in the area. And that is maybe not as complete here. But it's also not as, I mean, I think the first reason we needed it was essential. We literally had to know what we would be voting on. And this is more a matter of whether each individual member is comfortable with that determination about the character of the neighborhood. And so I think that it's not, it's not quite sort of a situation with like an incomplete application where you say, you just haven't given me A, B, and C. It's more about if you want to pitch me on why this is within the character of the neighborhood, this is what I needed to hear and maybe I didn't hear it. So I think it's, I think it's certainly sufficient to move on with this, but I also think that you're, you're exactly right, that we don't have, we're doing the sort of the back of the napkin kind of math to try to ballpark it and we have a general idea of where it falls on that scale, but we don't know exactly. I think that's fair. Other questions from planning board members or comments? All right, any questions or comments from the public? Again, you can raise your virtual hand on Zoom or raise your physical hand or unmute, star nine on a phone. I don't see anyone, but Jeff or Curtis, if you see anybody, I got a Zoom update that's making it more confusing for me to figure out what I'm looking at.
I don't see anyone at the moment looking to chime in. I did want to add, before we take the next step, and there was someone who just re-entered with a phone number. You know, in the event that you have a phone number and you're calling in, it's star six to unmute and star nine to raise your hand on a phone. But at the last meeting, there was a pair of people, Rappelis, Wally Rappelis, who brought to the attention of the board questions about the sort of historical character of the north branch of the manhandle. And I submitted an email to the board that was sent on Sunday. I do want to just relay that the, that person and the family did provide the book that was referenced last time and some materials. And I realize it's a, it's a delicate book that's, you know, you, it's, looks like it's their only copy and I had no real means to scan it. And so depending on where the board ends up with this discussion, I mean, I, I looked through it carefully and I do have the ability to pull up a map. There was a map referring to the north branch of the manhandle in Loudville. And I think the connotation about Loudville was what originally probably brought questions for this person whose mother wrote the book about the north branch and its historical importance. I just want to relate to the board that I think that the, the water resource adjacent to this property is Broad Brook, which is not, it's not the north branch of the manhandle. And just as a quick tidbit, the, the village And just as a quick tidbit, the, the village of Loudville, um, really seems to hinge on, um, continuing along Loudville Road to the intersection of Torrey Street. And if you took a left down Torrey Street, um, to the Manhan, there was a village and historic mill development there in the late 1800s, and I believe that that was really what starts this discussion about the, the historical character of the north branch. So I don't know if the board wants me to put any other information up. I, I would dig it out of my email. I have a screenshot of two pages of the book, but I, I want to relay that I don't think that the contents of the book relate to this, to this property in any way.
Yeah, I think we covered that, Jeff, at the last meeting. I am going to read the email into the record, just so it's here, um, that they just sent. But again, this is an email Sunday to Jeff Baggs. Subject is concern. It's from Wallace Rappelis. Hi, Jeff, again, I'm sorry that we were unable to connect. To refresh our minds, Paul and I want to share the following. As you know, we have been concerned about the proposed development coming to a vote on Tuesday. No one wants to be denied housing, especially for Paula and I that have been blessed for having such wonderful neighbors. What concerns us, however, is of land that our mom so carefully documented in her book, the north branch of the Manhan River. She poured her heart and soul into this, especially given that the land is of such historical significance. A case in point are the countless buttons on the banks of the river that remain from the war effort. As documented in the book, some of these buttons had adorned Civil War uniforms back at that time. Our mom would be turning in her grave. Paula and I are concerned about this prospect, and we are so appreciative of your investigating this further. I have left the book, photos, and article from the Gazette taped to a panel that we would like to have displayed at Tuesday's meeting at our front door. We would like to have these items placed as evidence, if applicable, to this discussion. Our address again is 1 Southampton East Hampton, South Hampshire Street, East Hampton. Our house phone and myself. Thank you so much, Paula and Wallace, Wally Rappelis. So I think that when we talked about this last week, I think, first of all, you're right, Jeff, that we determined that it was actually, um, the, what, what's the Broadbrook or that we're dealing with, right?
Yeah, Broadbrook, yep.
But I think we also discussed the fact that the, the, the river that's flowing through this property actually is relatively well-protected by this project, so I'm not sure that it impacts that, even if that was a similar kind of place. But I'm happy to hear from other planning board members or members of the public if they have comments or questions on that issue or anything else. All right, I don't see anything. Jeff, any other comments from the planning department on this?
The only, you know, the only other comment, and it depends on, on how you want to take next step, is that the last meeting on November 10th, there was a draft decision crafted. And I think, I think as it's been identified, there are quite a few findings of fact that can be made about the project, and then it was really kind of the last, that the last two, there's really, it boils down to almost two findings that are, that remain based on trying to gather more information. So, um, that, that draft does, I mean, that draft is still relevant. I haven't updated it. Um, there are a set of potential conditions that, you know, would be discussed, and so, so to you, Chair Beltrami, I don't know how you want to approach kind of this, this next step, if that's where we, if that's where the board goes.
Well, I mean, I guess we can go back to sort of doing a straw poll on these issues that we're talking about that are remaining, or we can go through this draft decision, and then, once we've gone through all the language, we can vote and see where people land, but, um, I'm, I'm open to either, depending on what planning board members want to do. But, Jeff, other than the character of their neighborhood, what did you see as the other issue? I'm blanking on that, that's.
I believe, um, as I talk, I need to go to my documents. So there were two findings. The consistency of the development with respect to setback, area placement of parking, architectural style, and landscaping of the surrounding buildings and the development. So that's actually a finding under the special permit section.
Yep.
And then I think it's just closely related to the finding under multifamily, which is, it's around the design requirements.
Right, in harmony.
And so, yeah, so those are really the two, the two that are interconnected. One's under the multifamily section and one's under the special permit findings.
So, I mean, I guess we can find that, I mean, we have to have a motion on this, even if there isn't a majority. Well, we need, I think this needs four out of five to pass, correct, Jeff?
Correct, and I think we talked about it, that we do have an associate member, um, Member Sanders, that, that that vote doesn't count towards the.
Yeah.
Four of five, so.
On this one, unfortunately.
Do you like a motion, Jesse?
Well, I, I don't think we want a motion. I think what we actually would need is we can do a straw poll and see if the plan as presented satisfies the planning board as to, I guess specifically, it would be that 8.332 design requirements, whether buildings are in harmony with the prevailing character and scale of buildings in the neighborhood and city. And then see if there's a critical mass that would be in favor of that, and then we could go, if so, then we can go through the decision the rest of the way. But I don't know, it makes sense to go through the entire decision just to find out that we're not gonna vote for it, so, Chris, comment.
Can I get a quick clarification? What is the exact language? Is it the scale and, the scale and, and size within the city or within the neighborhood?
So here's, here's 8.332 design requirements. Buildings shall be in harmony with the prevailing character and scale of buildings in the neighborhood and the city. Oh, good, I don't even have to read it.
Sorry, yeah.
Through the use of appropriate building materials, screening, breaks in roof and wall lines, and other architectural techniques. Variation in detail, form and siding shall be used to provide visual interest and avoid monotony. Proposed buildings shall relate harmoniously to each other with the adequate light, air, circulation separation between buildings. So, Chris, to your second question, it is the neighborhood and the city.
Okay.
And so I, I guess the first question is whether, um, you know, whether four out of five of us think that, as proposed right now, um, the buildings are in harmony with the prevailing character and scale of buildings in the neighborhood. So I guess we can, we can do a, a straw poll on that. I mean, I, I'll go first, just because this is awkward. I mean, I mean, I think this is really, really close for me, and I, and I've struggled with it every time we've talked about it. I, I would say, for the purposes of a vote, I'm landing on the side that it is. I think that this, these would be large for the neighborhood, but I think that they're still within the, the context of what other structures are, that it's not, um, sort of out of whack, that technical planning term, out of whack. So that would be where I would fall, so. I, I'm, I won't force anyone, but James?
Thank you, Jesse, that was brave. I feel that, and have indicated from the very beginning, that this isn't close, that the scale that would really trip this off for me is something much bigger, but I very much respect, um, that this is something that each board member had to contend with, and we've gone through, I think, what are we, in the eighth or plus meeting right now? I think this may in fact be the longest, uh, we've had on the agenda, any one project in the past, I'm not quite sure. But despite that said, I don't mean that as a criticism. I think in this case, it really is very important that everyone finds the answer in themselves, and if that required extra time to get through, then that's, that's perfectly fair. For me, like I said, it's, it's not even close. There, there's, there's just no question that this fits, it fits well, and I, I definitely think it's, uh, it's ready for approval.
Thanks, James. Any other members want to give us a hint, so we can figure out how far into this we're going?
Well, I, I'll just say, um, this is really difficult. It's really difficult for me. Um, one of the things that's troubled me is, and I don't doubt that this has been the longest series of meetings, um, I really feel like I've tried really hard to get the facts I need to make a decision on, on many of the ordinances, but 8.332 in particular. And I, I really feel like, um, that was very difficult, you know? I, I don't understand why the last drawing we're seeing is the first drawing we asked for in July. I mean, so it's hard for me to, you know, on September 30th, they said the square footage was about 1,500 square feet, and November 6th, they said it's about 1,800 square feet. Today, they say it's 1,200 square feet. So for me, I'm just not comfortable with the facts that have been provided for me to vote yes. That's what it's coming down to for me, is I. I, I guess that's just the, the best way to say it. I'm just, I'm, I'm not, um, satisfied, I'm not satisfied with, at every meeting, I wasn't satisfied with, you know, what I was or wasn't provided. So for that reason, I, I couldn't vote yes.
Thanks, Brenda.
Thank you, Brenda. I, I, I tend to agree with Brenda in the sense of, I don't, I, it has been, it has been different information every meeting, it's not consistent, from what I've seen. I, um, I don't, I do not feel like the buildings fit the character of the neighborhood at all. Um, I think they are a lot closer and they're a lot bigger than the, than the, um, houses in the neighborhood. However, I think they are within the character of the city. I live on Clark Street in a single-family home, and right across the street from me is a four-family row house, all connected. Next to them is two tiny houses on two very, very small pieces of land, that probably was one piece of land, and they're right on top of each other, down the street, a Sunrise Manor. There's, there's multifamilies on each side of me, so I feel like that it is in character with the city to have duplexes, and you look on East Street with all the duplexes in that neighborhood. So, um, I think that, um, it is in character with the city. I would, I would, I would tend to vote yes on this with the, with the caveat that, um, that if the plans, elevations and sizes, or really any dimensions change substantially, say, more than 10% of square footage, more than 10% of, um, of the, of the dimensions, or if there's any substantial change to the view, like if they remove the gables or made it all of a sudden a modern-style home, duplexes, that they would be required to come back to the planning board for review and approval. And that would be the only way I would approve it, is with that strong, strong condition in the, in the plan, so that we could review whether the actual finished structures are in keeping with the, with the style of East Hampton.
Thanks, Chris. Harry?
We're not talking about the whole city, we're talking about the neighborhood.
Well, that's why I clarified it, it says neighborhood and city.
City's got nothing to do with it, so it's just the neighborhood. What do you really feel, live over on, uh, like, I live on Clark Street, and I've got about, you know, all kinds of different kind of buildings on Clark Street. We're not talking about Clark Street, Unit Street, or we're talking about Logville Row.
So, so what do you think, Harry? Are these within the character of that, or would you not be able to vote for that finding?
I don't know, I'm really caught between a rock and a hard place, you know? When I look at it one way, it doesn't look that bad, and I look at it another way, it doesn't look good, I mean, I don't know. I'm just, I've been looking at this for, for the last eight weeks, or the last eight meetings, and. You know, one day I say, well, it's, you know, it's, it'll be okay, then I look at it another way, I'm going, well, geez, too big, and it's this or that. My company's made with it, with my money made up, and then next thing you know, it goes the other direction, so I'm not, you know, I really don't know what the hell to do.
So, I mean, we can go through this process, um, I guess, Rob, some of this is to you as well, and Jessica, I mean, we can go through the findings and take a vote. It sounds like there's a, a risk of a four out of five yes, or maybe not four out of five. Or we could continue this, and you could offer additional information, um, or you could withdraw the application without prejudice, I mean, we, we can do any number of things, but I guess at this point, it sort of falls to you guys as far as if you want us to go through with this vote, and, and, I mean, you sort of have seen where people's thoughts are, or if you want to have another shot at trying to convince fence sitters that this is within the character and how you guys want to move forward.
Yeah, if, if it's okay through the chair, I'd like to speak to the, the comments made. So as mentioned, we didn't have the benefit of the final architectural, so if there was any confusion along the way regarding square footages of the units, um, it would have been based on interpretation, but we certainly have, you know, those now. I do understand where people are coming from, I understand toiling with 8.33, whatever the section is. That said, I think it's important to note, you know, the alternatives to this. So let's just assume for a second that the site will be developed. So there's two, there's two approaches that can be taken. One is the subdivision approach, as you're aware, which is a by-rate filing. The way that the language is typically, is written in subdivision control law is that the planning board shall approve if we meet the subdivision standards and don't have any major waivers, et cetera. So that is obviously Plan B or Option B, so to speak. So Option A, in our opinion, was actually a less impactful, uh, project for a number of reasons. One, it, it clusters the housing, um, in any area that allows us to have the green space and open space. If we were to do a subdivision road, there's zero control over buffer. There's, on the lots, as you're aware, you can, you can develop a single-family lot any way you like, once you own it, as long as you're meeting the, you know, performance standards for the Weapons Protection Act and other related development criteria. So I really do truly believe that this is a less impactful project. We have, you know, a significant amount of acreage that's going to open space, as in, we agreed to permanently protect that. We have very specific buffers that will be maintained by the homeowners association, and we have the, um, the comfort of knowing that the homeowners association will hire professional landscaping contractors, adhere to the, um, the orders and conditions that have been issued by the Conservation Commission, adhere to the decisions made by the planning board. So there's a lot more control in this project. I do understand that, you know, you're toiling with the units themselves. I think that's been a focus for a long time. I think it's important, obviously, that they, that they, I, you know, if you look at the units, they are residential in scale. We're not talking about a multi-story apartment building, we're not talking about a big, ugly block building, this is a residential structure. It will have residential lighting for each unit, it'll have porches, the, the, all the architectural details that we've shown, there'll be cladboard siding, asphalt roofs, just like the other houses in the neighborhood. So I do feel strongly that this is a better project. I think it's less impactful, I think all of the open space can be controlled. When a subdivision is done, as you're aware, the road gets, you know, let's just say that subdivision gets approved, the road gets installed, they put binder down, and then it's a free-for-all. Each lot can be purchased by a different developer. Each one of these houses, uh, as long as they meet the coverage requirements for a single-family home, there's no reason why a house couldn't be 4,000 square feet on one of these lots, if that, if that was the case. We did look at that, um, you know, that wasn't the approach that we thought was most appropriate. So that's, that's, you know, I would, I would leave you with that. We obviously don't want to go down a road that leads to appeal, um, so we do appreciate the fact that the planning board is willing to kind of take a straw vote. If it's possible, uh, if, if, if Harry feels comfortable that any of those other factors come into play, we, we would, you know, we'd like a unanimous vote, but if that's not possible, and you think, if you think that we can avoid, you know, a decision against the project, we, um, we would like to move forward. If not, then if, you know, I don't know, we certainly don't want a straw without prejudice, that's not an option. We want a decision, but we are, if, if there was really something left that we're not, you know, that's going to sway members in the other direction, and it takes two weeks to figure that out or whatever, we, you know, we hate to, we hate to burn more of the planning board's time, but we're certainly willing to do what it takes. If it's possible to get unanimous vote, and there's something that we can do, we will endeavor to do so.
Well, I think, I mean, you, you know as much as I do about what everyone's thinking, because we've all said it right here on the record. I mean, so first of all, remember that you need four out of five, so if there's even two no's, you could, you could quote-unquote win three to two, but still get no permit. I mean, it sounds like i-if there's a way to make more, put together more information sort of reflecting the actual size of various aspects of these structures with the other ones in the community, that might be helpful, but, um, I, I don't know if that's possible or not. Jim?
Thank you. I just wanted to double-check on something that helped form my decision amongst other things, but can you just confirm for me, Mr. Levesque, how many of these larger units are visible from the road?
Jess, could you bring up the plan? By larger units, are you, do you mean?
Well, there's the one, there's the number-one unit I know that's right on the road, and then, when you drive by, how much of this place are you seeing?
I believe you'll see unit two, um, and unit three, a little bit. The remainder of the units are, are screened pretty well. I'm not saying you wouldn't, as you drive by, have glimpses of, of units, you know, maybe units 10 and 11 for sure.
It's, it's largely invisible.
Yeah, and it's gonna, I mean, I don't want to say it's going to be invisible, it, it, but, but. Yeah, I mean, I don't want to say it's going to be invisible, but yeah, you're going to be limited. You really are going to be looking at, you know, Unit One as you do now.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
Literally back behind the house of Unit One and the existing buffer that will remain will really screen. The majority of this will not be seen from the neighborhood. I think that's a fair statement.
Thanks, James. Any other comments or questions from planning board members? Harry?
I don't know why we're concerned about seeing these things from the road. If they comply with the neighborhood and everybody has an agreement that they fit right in, then why, who cares if they can see it from the road or not? What's that going to do with anything? If they supposedly fit in with the neighborhood, it doesn't matter how many you can see.
Agree to disagree.
Any other comments or questions from planning board members or the planning department? So, Rob, I guess that sort of leaves it back with you as far as, I mean, do you think that it's worthwhile? Or there's more information you could gather in two weeks or four weeks to try to sway people? Or do we want to proceed with reading through the decision and taking a vote?
If possible, through the chair, I would like to try to see if there's anything, you know, is there any conditions or buffering or something that we could do just to help Harry feel comfortable? You know, I guess if we look at this, like the plan that's in front of us, you know, if you did a subdivision, the curb cut would arguably be generally in the same spot, right? But then you would have multiple lots off of that subdivision that could be developed in any way that they see fit. So you would probably have structures that are close to, if not similar in size. You know, and again, those units would be, you know, there would be no requirement for buffer to the neighbors. There would, you know, we would obviously have to meet the Weapons Protection Act performance standards and ordinance. But other than that, you'd generally be in a situation where those lots could be cleared and developed as the owners see fit, once it's conveyed. So if there's a way to, to adjust, or if there's something that would help the, help Harry to feel comfortable, I think we have the units pretty well detailed. It really just comes down to a question if that's, if there's an adjustment or if that's satisfactory. It is literally behind the house and we're going to look at the side, which is a smaller side. And it's a two-car garage, really it's a two-car garage there, so it looks similar to a single-family home. And the bigger units that, you know, are in the back are going to be much less visible, arguably behind three units before you see the first one. But I do believe you'll see a little bit of it as you, if you really try hard, as you're driving by, you look to the right, I do think you'll see it, 10 and 11 a little bit.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll, we might as well proceed with reading through the decision and see where the votes land on. Does that make sense to planning board members?
If I could, Harry, does Harry have any specifics that might help?
Is there additional information that the applicant could give us either at this meeting or a future meeting that might convince you that this is within the character of the neighborhood? Or are you just wrestling with a tough decision and you're just going to have to see where you land when you vote, which is also legitimate?
I don't think we could, to have another meeting would be a waste of time. I mean, we know what's going on. We know what's in front of us, so why prolong it?
All right. Then I will read through the findings and the draft decision. And we're going to have to pay careful attention to this. This was done before the last meeting. So we've had a fair amount of information changed since then, so we'll go through each one and make sure we're comfortable with the language. If there's any changes that we need, let's make sure we note it.
Jesse, do you want me to screen share for, to try to follow along, or is that going to make it work?
I think that'd be great. I'm going to go through, starting on page five, where the findings begin. So the first set of findings is under 8.3 for the multifamily housing. 8.3.1, multifamily dwellings by special permit. A reads, "Multi-family dwellings shall be permitted in the R5, R10, R15, R35, downtown business, highway business, neighborhood business and mill-industrial districts as noted in Table 5.1 only upon the issuance of a special permit from the planning board as specified in Section 12 of this ordinance and in accordance with the additional requirements specified herein." The proposed finding states, "The planning board finds that the property is located in the R35 zoning district where the use is allowed with a special permit." I don't think that's contentious. B states, "Multi-family dwellings with at least 15% of the dwelling units and not less than one unit, meeting the criteria for affordability as defined in Section 8.34, shall be permitted in the R5, R10, R15, R35, DB, HB, MB and MI districts as noted in Table 1, or Table 5.1 only upon issuance of a special permit from the planning board as specified in Table 5.1 in this ordinance and in accordance with the additional requirements specified herein." This does not have any affordable units. The proposed findings is the planning board finds proposal does not contain any affordable units, therefore this section is not applicable. Section C states, "The development shall be served by a public water system adequate in terms of fire protection and domestic use. The development shall be served by a public sewer or an individual on-lot septic system which meets the minimum requirements of Title V, State Environmental Code, and the rules and regulations of the East Hampton Board of Health as amended." The proposed finding states, "The planning board finds that the proposed development of nine new duplex buildings will be served by public water and public sewer, both being accessed through existing infrastructure on Loudville Road." All good still? 8.3.2 dimensional requirements. A, "All multifamily dwelling units shall conform to the dimensional requirements specified in Tables 6.1 and Tables 6.2." The proposed finding states, "The planning board finds that all dimensional requirements are met pursuant to the zoning table shown on Sheet C4." Specifically, the property is 642,700, oh, there's a typo there, Jeff. I don't know what that number is.
I believe it's the, I believe it's 600.
Zero is gone.
Actually, let me double-check that. That does look excessively large. If you continue on, I can check that.
14.74 acres, I think is the number you're looking for, Jeff. Where Table 6.1 requires 35,000 for the first unit and an additional 35,000 square feet for each additional unit. A total of 630,000 square feet is required for the proposed 18 units. The property contains 269 feet of frontage on Loudville Road, which exceeds the minimum requirement of 120 feet. The existing single-family dwelling at 73 Loudville is pre-existing non-conforming, but no changes to its setback are proposed. The remainder of the units comply with all minimum side and rear setbacks and no front setbacks are required for a multifamily development. The proposed building coverage is 5.4%, where 105% is allowed. That seems like that 105%. There's a typo.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sorry, just to go back to the prior one, it says nine new duplex buildings, just because I think we should be accurate. I think it's eight new duplex buildings and one single family.
Yep.
Just so there's no down the road.
Good. Jeff, do we have the dimensions or the square?
Yeah, it's 642,074 square feet.
Okay.
So that was a typo.
So that's your six in there. Okay, but the rest of the finding still holds true and it needs 630,000 for the proposed 18 units.
Jeff, there's an extra seven in there that you haven't, an extra, yeah, right there. I'm going to delete that one, too. Thank you. So do you want to go back to the previous question and just fix that quickly over here? Yeah, are we on? Planning board finds that, go up, the planning board finds that the proposed development of nine new duplex buildings, top of the page. We want to say eight new duplex building in one single building. Thank you.
And then what, what is the maximum allowed building coverage for percentage at the end there?
It's 10%.
10%, okay. Any other revisions or comments on 8.3.2A from planning board members? All right, B, "More than one structure may be allowed on a lot in a multifamily housing project by special permit from the planning board, provided that the minimum lot size requirements in Tables 6.1 and 6.2 are met for each structure." Proposed finding states, "The planning board finds that nine new structures are permitted under this special permit, consisting of eight duplexes and one single-family unit, along with the existing single-family dwelling for a total of 10 structures." C, "The maximum number of dwelling units per structure shall be 18, with the condition in the R15 and R35 districts that the minimum yard setbacks be increased to 50 feet if a structure contains over six units. In the mixed-use mill-industrial, the planning board by special permit may allow a greater number of units in the historic mill buildings." Proposed finding states, "The planning board finds that the proposed development consists of duplexes, which is less than the maximum 18 units allowed per structure." 8.33, "Additional requirements for multifamily dwellings." 8.331, "Sighting and layout requirements." A, "The development shall be integrated into the existing terrain and surrounding landscape and shall be designed to protect abutting properties and community amenities. Building sites shall, to the extent feasible, minimize use of wetlands, steep slopes, floodplains, hilltops, minimize obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations, preserve unique natural or historical features, minimize vegetation and soil removal and grade change, and maximize open space retention and screen objectional features from neighboring properties and roadways." Jeff, does this have that finding for A and B together? Is that the idea here?
Yeah, sorry, I was distracted. I was trying to make sure everyone was properly muted. A and B are combined, yes. I'm sorry.
So B states, "More than one structure may be placed on a lot, but no residential structures shall be placed closer to each other than 10 feet and must be visually separated by trees and plantings. In addition, each dwelling must be provided with access, drainage and utilities functionally equivalent to that provided under the planning board's subdivision rules and regulations." The proposed finding states, "The planning board finds that pursuant to the applicant's September 30th, 2020 written findings and discussions during the October 6th, 2020 public hearing." And I think that probably those dates need all be changed to include this meeting, right, Jeff? The proposed buildings are consistent with the style, architecture and massing of existing houses along this section of Loudville Road.
Sorry, Jesse, I'm struggling with the zoom and screen sharing. What I was going to note is I think the portion of this first sentence, which dates the documents and the documents and the date, I think are correct, but I think this is not the correct section to say that the proposed buildings are consistent with the style and architecture and massing. I think that that's.
That's 3.32, right?
Yeah, yeah, I apologize. I think it's not in the right location, so I would propose that that gets struck out.
Okay, so after your note is actually where I think it starts?
Yes, correct.
"The development is designed to minimally impact the natural and scenic features of the site. Visual impacts to abutting properties are minimized using existing vegetation, proposed plantings for vegetation and preservation of existing trees adjacent to 75 Loudville. The buildings are sighted away from wetlands and other natural features and, to the extent feasible, utilizes the flag grade at specific locations to prevent the need for extensive cut and fill. The units have been sighted to minimize impact to wetlands and steep slopes to the greatest extent possible while maintaining a proposed density. The board finds that the slopes at the rear of Units Eight and Nine are approximately 10% and some grading will take place in these areas. The property is not located in a floodplain or on a hilltop. Views to the proposed development from the Hanbrook Conservation Area are minimal due to the wooded vegetative buffer between the conservation area and buildings and range, and the buildings, and range between 180 feet and 320 feet in depth. The site does not contain any known historical features as the property is not listed on the state historic inventory. The limit of work for the project avoids all wetlands, isolated vegetative wetlands and their associated natural features. Tree and vegetation removal, soil removal and grade changes have been minimized to the greatest extent possible. The total limit of work for the projects is 4.69 acres or 31% of the total parcel. Approximately 80% of the site, 11.85 acres, I got a duplicate of the site there, Jeff, is wooded with only 2.02 acres of trees to be removed. The undeveloped portions are either protected under the Wetland Protection Act, will be sought for certification as vernal pools under NHTSP or will gain a protective designation through a declaration of restrictions and covenants as requested by the Conservation Commission." Any changes to that section from planning board members?
Just to recap, so that, that's why I think the reference to the September 30th written findings and discussion of October 6th is important because the applicant at that point read through that entire document.
Yep.
And the presumption at that point was that those findings were acceptable, so those are inserted from that report. Okay, so the, I did strike the reference to the buildings consistent with style and characters. I think that that comes later.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, C, "In the DB, HB and MI districts, no dwellings shall be permitted on the street level. The proposed finding states, 'The planning board finds that this section is not applicable.'" 8.332, "Design requirements." A, "Buildings shall be in harmony with the prevailing character and scale of buildings in the neighborhood and the city through the use of appropriate building materials, screening, breaks in roof and wall lines and other architectural techniques. Variation in detail, form and sighting shall be used to provide visual interest and avoid monotony. Proposed buildings shall relate harmoniously to each other with adequate light, air, circulation and separation between buildings." Proposed finding states, "The planning board finds that pursuant to the applicant's September 30th, 2020 written findings and discussions during the October 6th, 2020 public hearing." And Jeff, I think this is where we have to add this public hearing as well and the drawings we received today. "The proposed buildings are consistent with the style, architecture and massing of the existing houses along this section of Loudville Road. The buildings will generally be Cape Cod architectural style with side gabled roofs and gable dormer windows. The building height ranges from 16 feet on the rear to 25 on the front as a result of the saltback box roof style. These buildings' heights are consistent with buildings on abutting properties within a .25 mile section of Loudville Road. Offsets in jogs in the facades and roofs, along with the dormers and roof slope changes, provide variation in building detail. The sighting of buildings at various angles along the access roads avoids monotony. The distance between the duplexes will range from 20 feet to 100 feet and will be of similar style and architectural detail." So I guess, first of all, are those height ranges still right based on what we just got tonight?
I would ask the applicant, and again, the paragraph starting with the buildings will generally be, is taken from the September 30th document.
Yep.
And then just to recap, so the highlighted section here is the November 6th submission, which is the chart that has caused some of the confusion with reference to the growth floor area and living space. So I think that is still a question where we ultimately end, whether that document is going to be something that's referenced and utilized to make the finding. I think that's a difficult question to tackle. But I think the easy one for the applicant is the building height ranges, which was taken from text of that September 30th and whether that's still accurate.
Yeah, so to clarify through the chair, the, this is Rob Levesque again. The elevations are on the architectures provided, so we could just confirm the range. They're all to scale. I think the maximum height is going to be easy to discern from those. The minimum height might not be dimensioned on those, but I think height ranges, you know, I think if you say approximately and not to exceed the height on the plans, which Jess would be so kind as to share that the maximum elevation shown on any of the units. The maximum height.
I think, Jeff, after the 16 feet, you changed ton to two. I think maybe you meant to change it to on.
Yeah.
On the rear to 25 feet on the front.
Are we trying to screen share for Jessica?
I don't think so. I think if Jessica can just pull us the number for the maximum height.
My apologies. I just misheard and I wasn't certain.
Yeah, no. Yeah, no.
It looks like twenty-three feet is the highest.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, I see twenties, I'd see twenty-five and some change on these. Twenty-five feet, six inches. Seems to be the consistent.
Yeah, it'd be good to pull them up, just, just so we can confirm, if possible, and do not want to get that wrong.
Yeah. Yep, hold on one sec. Okay, so we have a grade of ninety-eight feet.
So just to
And a ridge height. What height are we gonna go by? The top of the very tippy top?
On this single, so I just want to compare all of them. So this one is twenty-four feet, nine and seventy inches. That is the single, the double single.
This is the double single, yep.
The
Man, I think, I, I don't want to push this too hard. I, I mean, I, I just was looking at the dimensional requirements for R thirty-five, and you can go up to forty and you can go to three stories. So I mean, I think, I don't know that the height was ever really the issue per se.
Are part of the, are part of the application in the decision now anyway, so I think we can say, we can make that a twenty-six, approximately twenty-six, you know, in accordance
In accordance with the drawings, right.
Do you say anything about one and a half stories or whatever it is intended to be?
Probably should.
We can in that sentence before. Jeff, can you share again?
Yeah.
The buildings will, I don't know if we need generally in there. I think we could say will be one and a half story Cape, Cape Cod architectural style.
Yep.
I think you need to be before that, but
Yeah, I can get rid of that.
It's fun having a million people proofread you as you type, right, Jeff?
There's no pressure, Jeff. We're all here. It takes a village. We're all here for you. I think it's architectural drawings. I don't think architectural is actually a real word.
Now you tell us. Okay, any other changes to that section that we need? All right, eight point three, three, three vehicular and pedestrian access requirements. A, the plan shall maximize the convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site and in relation to adjacent ways. Proposed finding states, the planning board finds that the project will provide a subdivision standard road width for vehicular traffic and will provide pedestrian lighting fixtures and a sidewalk on one side of the road. The planning board finds that the submitted traffic impact assessment appropriately determines that the addition of approximately nine additional trips during the weekday morning peak and approximately thirteen new vehicle trips during the weekday afternoon peak is a low traffic generator and is expected to have minimal impact on the operations of the study area roadways. All right. B, multifamily structures shall have access on roads having sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic generated by the site. Proposed finding states, the planning board finds that the proposed roadway meets subdivision standards for width, grades, and construction specifications. C, connecting walkways with tree belts shall be provided between structures and parking areas within the site and shall be constructed in accordance with the standards set forth in the East Hampton subdivision regulations. Proposed finding states, the planning board finds that the proposed, that the proposal provides adequate sidewalks throughout the development to satisfy this requirement. Eight point three, three, four, open space and buffer area requirements. A, the board may require that a minimum of fifty percent of all land not devoted to dwellings, accessory uses, roads, or other development be reserved as open space and be made available for active and passive recreation. Proposed finding states, the planning board finds that thirty-one percent of the property will be developed, which will result in sixty-nine percent reserved as open space. Due to the sensitive nature of the remainder of the parcel, active and passive recreation will not be provided as a means of protection of the resource areas. B, multifamily dwellings shall be separated from adjacent properties by buffer strips consisting of trees and or fencing sufficient to minimize the visual and noise impacts of the development. Such a buffer strip shall be at least ten feet in width, and it shall contain a screen of plantings. The screen shall not be less than five feet in width and six feet in height at the time of occupancy of such lot. Individual shrubs or trees shall be planted as close as necessary to create a visual screen and shall thereafter be maintained by the owner or occupants so as to maintain a dense screen year round. At least fifty percent of the plantings shall consist of evergreens. A solid wall or fence not to exceed six feet in height, complemented by suitable plantings, may be substituted for such landscape buffer strip as approved by the planning board. The strip may be part of the yard. The proposed finding states, the planning board finds that the M O U, an existing tree location plan, will provide a vegetated screen to satisfy this section and to separate units four or five from the property at seventy-five Loudville Road.
I have a question on that, a quick question. Unit sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, do they still have that same ten-foot buffer between the building cleared area and the, on abutting parcels?
You had asked about unit sixteen is the single unit.
Yeah, I think that's okay.
Yeah.
But seventeen and eighteen, I remember when we went out and looked at the stakes, that was very close to the neighbors.
Yeah.
Pile. Driveway.
Correct. I believe that units sixteen and seventeen have clearing that goes up to the property line. But there is screening proposed, so I would defer to the applicant to pull that up, but the site landscaping plan does show of plantings to occur in between the sixteen and seventeen and that property line. So, and I did note that the other, I did, and maybe applicant, if you could be prepared to pull up the landscaping plan. But I do know that this was relatively focused on the concerns raised by the owner of seventy-five. So I think the other areas, other than the units sixteen and seventeen, the other areas have the vegetated buffer, so we could potentially add that, but I'll stop my screen share for a moment and just clarify, have the applicant clarify the landscaping in between sixteen and seventeen.
Thank you. So just to clarify, sixteen is the single unit, and there is existing vegetative buffer adjacent to the property line. In between sixteen and seventeen, we're proposing evergreen screening, as well as there is a, an existing bordering vegetative wetland off property that will restrict in, you know, in real development or by the neighbors. So I would expect that that buffer, our buffer and their buffer will remain, our buffer will certainly remain, but I would expect theirs will too. And then as we are at the back of seventeen and eighteen, we are supplementing that with evergreens along that backside.
And Rob, is that a ten-foot buffer of evergreens?
Right, because the, the finding, the bylaws that it's a ten-foot buffer between the building and
I don't
adjacent property line.
Yeah, I don't know what the scale of those, those strike this, but at the time it's grown in, yes. But we can just ensure if you wanted to make that a condition, that's easy enough to supplement.
Yeah, I think, Jeff, I think we'll have to put in that that there will be a ten-foot buffer between seventeen and eighteen and the abutting properties, and we can make that a condition, but it's also
We can certainly need that requirement.
Yeah, I would, I would just add sixteen in just for the purposes of adding it in because it's adjacent to the buffer.
Yep, yeah.
It shows correctly now. I'm sure that's plenty, that is more than ten feet shown there, but just to be sure.
That's fair. Thank you.
All right. Eight point three, three, five, parking, loading, and lighting requirements. A, to the extent feasible, parking areas shall not be located within a required front yard and shall be screened from public ways and adjacent or abutting properties by building location, fencing, or planting. No individual parking area shall contain more than fourteen spaces. Parking spaces shall be located not less than fifteen feet from the front property line and ten feet from the back or side property lines. No parking shall be allowed on interior streets. Proposed finding states, the planning board finds that the primary parking area for the units are in the driveways and in the garages, and that this provision is not applicable to duplexes as opposed to potentially larger multifamily buildings with additional units and separate parking areas.
All right, I was not immune for that, sorry.
That's all right. B, exposed storage areas, machinery, service areas, truck loading areas, utility buildings, and structures and other unsightly uses shall be set back or screened to protect the neighbors from objectional features. Proposed finding states, the planning board finds that the proposal is for small residential units where no dumpster or service areas are required, and this section is not applicable. C, no building shall be floodlit. Drives, parking areas, walkways, and entrance ways shall be illuminated only by shielded lights not higher than fifteen feet. The planning board finds that this proposal includes fifteen, I'm sorry, proposed finding states, the planning board finds that this proposal includes fifteen-foot-tall shielded fixtures along the access road. Eight point three, three, six, water supply and sewage requirements. A, water supply and waste disposal systems shall not place excessive demands on municipal infrastructure. Proposed finding states, planning board finds that the proposed units will not place excessive demands on the municipal sewer system. Eight point three, three, seven, stormwater runoff. A, to the extent feasible, measures for runoff from impervious surface should be designed to meet the following objectives in an appropriate manner. One, prevent non-point source pollution from urban runoff to streams, water bodies, or groundwater. Two, prevent the flooding of other neighboring down gradient properties. Three, promote recharge of groundwater aquifers while preventing pollutants from entering groundwater. Proposed finding states, the planning board finds that the project was reviewed by the Conservation Commission and issued an order of conditions and stormwater permit on October sixth, twenty twenty in compliance with the city's stormwater management ordinance.
Jesse, I'm sorry to interrupt. You're doing so good, and you know, I did know two things, which is that we had a, we had Wally Rapelis join the meeting as we were well underway, and I did get, I just got an email from him. And I, I did mute the person. I did mute the caller, but if, if, if you don't mind, going back to eight point three, three, one, Mr. Rapelis noted that the section talks about historical significance. And I think he, I think he missed the discussion that we had about about the, the book and the reference to the historical significance, and I don't know if it's worth, if it's meaningful to go back and reference something while he's on the call. I'm sorry that he just
I mean, I'll, I'll restate what I said before, Wally, if you're there, hopefully you can hear. I think we clarified that this was not the branch of the river that was mentioned in your mother's book, but that to the extent that there was any similar sort of historical features there, the proposal protects the waterway and the land, the conservation land, so that that will be preserved in any event.
I see, I see. So we're not the area that was referenced in our mom's book. The that area is, it's not going to be impacted if the development is approved.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
My sister Paula is here with me.
Okay.
Yeah. One thing, so as far as the development, it's on the, it's on the other side of Loudville Road, correct?
Correct.
I mean, when I if I drove, driving away from the intersection with West Street to where it leaves Glen Deal Street to become Loudville Road, that intersection with the blinking light.
Yep.
Going further, heading towards the, heading towards the direction of Tarby Street, that stretch are, is the development going to be on the right-hand side of Loudville Road?
Yeah, it's on the right as you're heading out.
Development goes through.
Yep, and I think the, the waterway that your mother's
Heading out of town. Is on the opposite side of
Yeah, it's, it's the other side of the road.
Hey, there are the falls.
I see.
There are the falls, and there's a brick house way, way out. And that's the part I'm thinking of, because that goal is down to the lead mines.
Right, right. If it, if it, and then I'll be done, but if one thing that would be given of consideration that might be architecturally or pleasing, if for anybody that is living in that section of Loudville Road, that there would be signage for the research that our mom did on the north branch of the Manhattan River, because definitely they can serve as a reference point to what our, to what our mom wrote about. And the reason why I say that is because of the buttons that are in the riverbank of, of the north branch of the Manhattan River, and those buttons were used, as I indicated in my letter, adorned Civil War uniforms. And
Wally, I mean Wally, I think that, I, I think this is probably some, it's outside the planning board's jurisdiction, but I certainly think it's something you could bring to the city council about signage or some sort of marking out in that area to sort of indicate the significance of that, that section. I would certainly think that you could raise it with them, and they may be able to provide some sort of assistance on that.
Yeah, I wanted to give you
Commission?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, all right, Wally, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Jeff, so next up is eight point three, three, eight. Utility requirements, electric, telephone, cable, TV, and other such utilities shall be underground. Proposed finding states, the planning board finds that all utilities will be underground upon leaving the public way. Eight point three, three, nine, accessibility requirements. Development seeking permitting for deed-restricted multifamily housing for persons over age fifty-five shall design first four units for universal access and shall construct all units to allow for future needed improvements for accessibility to persons with disabilities. Proposed finding states, the planning board finds that this section is not applicable. So then we move on to our regular special permit findings. We're reaching the end. First up, under section twelve point seven, A, Conformance with the provisions of the ordinances of the City of East Hampton, the general laws of Massachusetts, and all applicable rules and regulations of state and federal agencies. Proposed finding states, the planning board finds that all of their building code requirements will be met for the construction of the units. B, protection of city amenities and abutting properties through the minimizing of any detrimental or offensive uses or destruction of unique or important natural, scenic, or historic features on the site. Proposed finding states, the planning board finds that the project minimizes the amount of disturbance on, on the overall, it looks like there's a missing word there, Jeff, on the overall site as articulated under the finding for section eight point three, three, one. C, minimization of traffic and safety impacts for the proposed development on adjacent highways or roads and maximizes the convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site. Proposed finding states, the planning board finds that the project will have minimal impact on traffic in the neighborhood, and the additional vehicle trips will not negatively impact Loudville Road. D, adequacy of the methods of disposal of sewage and refuse and the drainage of surface and subsurface water and adequate means of protecting wetlands, watersheds, aquifers, and well areas. Proposed finding states, the planning board finds that the proposed duplexes will comply with this section as the disposal of sewage and refuse is similar to other residential uses in the neighborhood, and the development will be regulated through a homeowners association. Pursuant to the Conservation Commission's order of conditions issued on October sixth, twenty twenty, the site can be developed without impacts to the adjacent resource areas. Additionally, the applicant agrees to seek certification of existing vernal pools and protect, protection of the remainder of the undeveloped land. E, mitigation of adverse impacts on the city's resources, including the effect on the city's water supply and distribution system, sewage collection, and treatment E mitigation of adverse impacts on the city's resources, including the effect on the city's water supply and distribution system sewage collection and treatment systems, fire protection and streets. Proposed finding states, the planning board finds that the project complies with this requirement and that the additional units will not have an adverse impact on the existing sewer system. F provisions for off-street loading and unloading of vehicles incidental to the normal operation of the establishment, parking, lighting and internal traffic control. Proposed finding states, the planning board finds that each unit contains a two-car garage and driveway area suitable for parking of residents similar to the surrounding neighborhood. I think that's probably a comma instead of a new sentence there.
May I want to just say one, one or two car garage, that's eight contains either a one or two car garage.
Good catch, Chris, thank you. Um, applicants efforts, the G applicants efforts to integrate the development into the existing landscape through design features such as vegetative buffers and retention of open space or agricultural land. Minimization of the area over which existing vegetation is to be removed. Where tree removal is required, special attention is to be given to the planting of replacement trees. Proposed finding states, the planning board finds that the development is designed to minimally, minimally impact the natural and scenic features of the site. Visual impacts to abutting properties are minimized using existing vegetation, proposed plantings for vegetation and preservation of existing trees adjacent to seventy-five Loudville. The buildings are sited away from wetlands and other natural features and to the extent feasible utilizes the flag grade at specific locations to prevent the need for extensive cotton fill. The units have been cited to maximize, to minimize impact to wetlands and steep slopes to the greatest extent possible while maintaining the proposed density. Is this also part of G, Jeff, this is sort of broken out in a weird way. Consistency of the development.
Harry's, uh, Harry's waving his hand.
Harry, you got a question?
Yeah, go back to D again, would you please?
Yep.
It says additionally, the applicant agreed to save certification of existing vernal pools and protection of the remainder of the undeveloped land, what does it mean by certification?
So I think we talked about, there's a, a system to designate those vernal pools as a protected areas, as, as a formal vernal pool, and I think the applicant has agreed. To at least seek that, I think it either qualifies or it doesn't, but they will take the steps to determine if it qualifies and if so, it will obtain that protection.
So what happened, they, they put something out there that certifies, I mean, how does that work?
I'm not sure if it's through DEP, Chris, do you know, or Rob?
Rob will know.
We would, uh, through the endangered species program, we would submit a request for a vernal pool certification. Um, and they would typically review that request and then if they deem it is, uh. Is it, it's a, I'm sorry, vernal pool worth protecting, it would then certify it and then it would be added to the endangered species maps. Um, in a, a little bit more protection.
All right. Thanks, Rob.
Yep.
Um, so Jeff, this consistency of the development, is that supposed to be part of G?
Yeah, I need to, I need to double check. Briefly here.
I have my multifamily in front of me, but not my special permit.
It should be H. No, I. Sorry, I need a second to determine that and then I'll get back to you.
Okay, where it goes, I guess we can still read the proposed finding for it, we'll figure out where it fits in the ordinance. Um, it states the consistency of the development with respect to setback area placement of parking architectural style and landscaping of the surrounding buildings and development. Proposed finding states, the planning board finds that pursuant to the applicant's September thirtieth twenty twenty written findings and discussions during the October sixth twenty twenty public hearing. Um, and I think we need again to reference this meeting and the submissions tonight. Um, the proposed buildings are consistent with the style, architecture and massing of the existing houses along this section of Loudville Road. The buildings will generally be Cape Cod architectural style with side gabled roofs and gable dormer windows, the building height ranges from sixteen to, on the rear to twenty-five on the front as a result of the south box roof style. These building heights are consistent with buildings on abutting properties within a point two five mile section of Loudville Road. Offsets and jogs in the facades and roofs along with the dormers and roof slope changes provide variation in building detail. The sighting of buildings at various angles along the access roads avoids monotony. The distance between the duplexes will range from twenty feet to one hundred feet and will be of similar style and architectural detail. So I think that just has to match up with that same finding we already edited on the multifamily. Um, H adequacy of the measures to prevent pollution of surface or groundwater to minimize erosion and sedimentation and to minimize changes in groundwater levels increased runoff and potential for flooding. Proposed finding states, the planning board finds that the project was reviewed by the conservation commission and issued an order of conditions and stormwater permit on October sixth twenty twenty in compliance with the city's stormwater management ordinance. I adequacy of the methods to ensure the use will not constitute a nuisance by reason of unacceptable level of air or water pollution, excessive noise or visually flagrant structures and accessories. Proposed finding states, the planning board finds that the construction of duplexes on the property will not constitute a nuisance because the new residential uses are compatible with existing residential uses in the area. And will not result in increased air or water pollution or excessive noise in the neighborhood. Okay, and then we've talked about several conditions. One is, um, prior to the issuance of any building permit associated with the development, a final homeowners association document suitable for recording at the registry of deeds shall be reviewed and approved by the planning board at a public meeting. The HOA shall contain provisions suitable to prevent encroachment into resource areas by homeowners, provisions limiting future development beyond the approved plans. Provisions for maintenance of stormwater drainage features in perpetuity pursuant to the long-term stormwater maintenance program dated June sixteenth twenty twenty. Road maintenance and statement that it will not be sought as a public way. And the only thing I wanted to put in here extra Jeff is, um. Prevent encroachment or dumping of yard waste into resource areas, we talked about that as something we wanted to make sure we're explicitly preventing. Any other, um, planning board members thoughts on what the HOA documents need to include? I think we covered everything here, but. Okay, two, prior to the issuance of any building permit associated with the development, proof of vernal pool certification or application and or denial of said request shall be submitted. Additionally, a fully formed declaration of restrictions and covenants for the protection of the remainder of the property shall be reviewed and approved by the planning board at a public meeting and then recorded at the registry of deeds. Three, planning department shall be notified in writing a minimum of five days prior to the commencement of any site work associated with the project. Four, all exterior site improvements shall be constructed and maintained in accordance with the following plans prepared by RLA associates. Title sheet dated June sixteenth twenty twenty, last revised October fifth twenty twenty, existing conditions plan dated June sixteenth twenty twenty. C one notes, C two.
Sorry, I, if you would bear with me for a moment, so here I. Even in, as the approach, in, in the approach to the last meeting, I did not finish going through. Um, to calibrate, some of the plans maintain the June sixteenth date. And then some have been revised and so. Um, you know, we have this little bit of an exercise to go through with the applicant, um, the site plan was revised as of either yesterday or today. Um, so I, I think it's just calibrating.
Um, the most recent plans?
Yeah, the most, yeah, thank you, that's the exact way to say it.
Okay, and so that, so the condition will be that, that they're bound to the most recent plan submitted.
Harry had his hand up.
Harry, thank you, Brenda.
You know, it's back on number one, I think. Just kept on going, you know, you know, I don't give a chance to reply.
I know, I'm sorry, I'll go slower. Did you have something to suggest for the HOA docs?
When Harry's done, I have a question on the HOA docs too.
I can't remember where you were, you know, where it was now, so.
Well, take, Chris is gonna ask a question, you can keep looking while Chris asks.
So this is the initial HOA docs they submit and then, um. Uh, should we, should we specify or is it already implicitly included that the HOA doc should specify? Um, storm, um, basically slope maintenance and, and, uh, uh, erosion and sediment control in the back of some of the houses. Which was something we discussed would be part of the HOA that they would inspect that every year to make sure there was no erosion down the slope.
Yeah, I like that.
And should we also discuss the trees to make sure that if the buffer is put up behind seventeen and eighteen that, that that is inspected every year too, to make sure that there hasn't been any like cutting down of trees to increase people's yards?
Yeah, the, the five covers the trees.
Okay.
Um, and I was gonna, uh, we've added language in some of these that it's not only that they have to build these trees, but they have to maintain the screening that we've ordered here. So that they have ongoing obligation, you know, if this stuff dies off in three years that they're not out of the woods, so to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Um. Harry, did you, did you see what, what?
Yeah, is it possible to make that, uh, twelve acres on a left-hand side of this whole thing as, uh, into a conservation area of some kind? Is that possible?
Well, they're gonna get, the applicant is gonna get a, uh, conservation restriction on the undeveloped property.
We could name it the, the landlord's conservation area or something, you know? It'd be a, one in the back.
Yeah.
You'd have twelve acres there and you had a, the brook in the back, that'd be all like connected together. Kind of nice, you know?
Yeah, so, so paragraph two, Harry, requires that prior to the issuance of any building permit associated with the development, proof of vernal pool certification. Additionally, a fully formed declaration of restriction and covenants for the protection of the remainder of the property shall be repro, reviewed and approved by the planning board. At a public meeting and then recorded at the registry of deeds, so they're gonna have to come to us with that. Um, document that will approve and have recorded that'll, that'll designate all of that undeveloped land as, as, um, conservation land.
All right.
And, and the goal, oh, go ahead, Brenda.
Just to be clear, uh, is the public gonna have access to it or, or no, it's just?
I think what we've decided or what we've talked about is that because it's sort of, um. There's, it's addressed in here on one of these that.
Like landlocked, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's landlocked, but it's also sort of, um. It, it's, it's at risk or it, it's, there's no trails or anything, I think there's sort of like an incentive to kind of discourage visiting it, but.
Okay, I was just clarifying.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Um, okay, stop me if anyone has anything else to add, but I'll move on.
I was just gonna add for clarity that under, under condition number two, I just want to make sure we're all clear that the vernal pool certification will be sought. But there's no guarantee that it will achieve the certification, so, so the action is that it will be sought, but then part B. Is, is a, an affirmative that the declaration of restriction and covenants will be, will occur and will come to the board and there's not a, there's not a question there, it's more of a question about the certification.
Right, they're, they'll, they'll reach out on the certification and it either is or isn't a qualifying vernal pool. Um, but they have to place the conservation restriction on the undeveloped land. Um, five, the trees identified on the existing tree location plan dated October sixth twenty twenty shall be preserved and protected prior to the commencement of any site work in addition to the conditions of the MOU between the applicant and owner of seventy-five Loudville Road dated October sixth twenty twenty. So here, Jeff, I think we also need to note the, um. Vegetative buffer that the applicant's putting up between sixteen, seventeen and eighteen. And state that the applicant has an ongoing obligation to maintain. The buffers. Referenced in this decision.
I will include the same language, um, and I'll, I'll make sure it's clear, but I'm just gonna make the note for now.
Yeah, okay. Um, six, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the first unit except the existing single family dwelling, all road utilities and drainage features shall be completed. In the event that any exterior changes cannot be completed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, an alternative schedule shall be reviewed and approved by the board at a public meeting prior to the issuance of a temporary certificate of occupancy. All plantings installed pursuant to the approved landscape plan that die shall be replaced by the owner with a similar species and size as originally required. Seven, during construction, temporary drainage basins shall be installed and functioning as outlined in the October sixth twenty twenty order of conditions. Eight.
I would, I, I have a question, when you said they'll be replaced by the owner, you don't mean the condo owner, you mean the association owner?
Hmm, that's a good point. Uh, association, right?
Yeah, she'll be replaced by the association.
HOA, I think you defined HOA previously, so you could say HOA if you wanted to.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Rob.
Uh, so what happens typically is the, the developer would be responsible. For, till a certain point, you know, at a certain point, the HOA would become responsible.
Okay.
Way to condo docs transfer, um, so I think would be appropriate to include both, so that it's being separately responsible.
Sure, let's say developer and homeowners association.
Right, there you go.
Um, thank you, Brenda, good catch. Uh, and eight, pursuant to the submitted tentative construction schedule, a model unit may be constructed. In the event that no other construction of a units begins within one year of the issuance of this special permit, the applicant shall appear before the planning board at a public meeting to provide an updated construction schedule. And then Chris, I think you had had a proposal determining what, um, what quarter, sort of deviations could, um, be made from the size of the structures.
Right, I mean, I think we, we laid out really, um. We laid out quite well in the actual finding about that it's a Cape Cod, it's got gables, it's got, um, you know, the, the descriptions of it.
Right, so remember the process too is that they're, they're bound by this and if they deviate. There's that issue where they can, if it's a, they come to us informally to ask if it's a material modification. And if it's material, in our opinion, they have to renotice a public hearing and everybody comes back and we go through this process about whether they modify the permit, but if we determine that it's not material. Um, we can let them make changes, so we've had that come up a couple of times with like minor things that I think INSA has done internally, that kind of thing.
So is that, is that kind of a standard condition anyway, or is it something we have to condition?
It's, it's a standard process for special permits, so they're bound by this and if they want to deviate from it, they have to come to us and determine if we think it's material or not. Within the ranges that we've given them and the flexibility we've given them.
Right, I'm, I'm fine with that, given that the finding is as specific as it is, that it's a Cape Cod style with gables and siding and, you know, the whole deal.
Okay, um, planning board members, um, or planning department, any other conditions that we've discussed or that you want to offer for the first time?
I would just add, um, I'm trying to make some notes here that give the applicant an understanding of what kind of condition this is, I just, there is a condition relative to the submitted elevation, so.
Yeah.
We do have language, it'll be to the effect that any changes, so it's gonna be, you know, the, up to the building inspector that any changes to those elevations. Um, shall be submitted to the planning board for review at a public meeting for, to determine if it's a significant enough change to require. You know, publication of a public hearing notice and things. Yeah, that would be, that would be acceptable to me as a condition.
And then Jeff, are we gonna call out as a condition, sort of the flexibility that the applicant is asking for here, that, you know, unit sixteen is staying single, the notes you've got there. And that the other ones, the other ones can be double or single or hybrid?
I think we should. Um, I think it's been clear that it's of importance that, um, unit two and three and unit four and five are the single car and, and the, and, yeah, I think, um.
I think that helps all, I think helps us and the applicant to make that clear in here that that's a condition, that those, some of these units are set in stone and the other ones, there's a little bit of an option to downgrade or downsize. So we can make that a condition as well?
Yeah.
Any other conditions from planning board members?
Um, I just want to confirm, when we say units two, three, four and five are duplex, single car garage, I think we should refer back. Or is it assumed?
No.
Refer back to the site plan, because it could still be huge with just one car garage.
Yeah, I agree, Brenda, it should, it should call out the specific plan.
Okay.
Nations that are shown.
Great, thanks.
Anything else from planning board members or the planning department? Rob, any issues with this from the applicant's perspective?
Uh, no, it seems very comprehensive, the only question I had, uh, was related to. The, I think it was the statement about the roadway, I think it was two items back. Um, that the, the units would, uh, could not be constructed until the roadway was complete. Um, I didn't, typically with a subdivision or a development, we, they typically would get all the binder course, all the drainage, all the binder course, uh, get it stabilized. Before they would do the units, but oftentimes the binder course would not go down right away. Um, if, I didn't know if there maybe an adjustment that would be acceptable to the planning board. Where, um, you know, the site would be stabilized, installation of binder course would be complete. Um, but that, you know, if we do, say we do five to ten units in the first year, um, we probably would want a, uh, top, the top course to go down after that. Um, way, so that way we're not damaging the road, we don't have to, that's all.
So. I apologize, I, I was trying to find where we were going, so it's, it's reference to condition number six, so it's prior to the issuance of a CO for the first unit. Um, so what was the applicant's request?
I, I, I'm sorry, I might have heard it differently, so it's, so if it's the CO, so if somebody were to, I guess my concern is, let's just say, you do all the road at once, right? And then they're gonna build, they're gonna say they build out the first unit. Um. Typically, they would be COs issued with, with the binder, oh, I'm sorry, with the top course not being down. Really, that was really the only thing, if binder's down versus, you know, we obviously want everything stabilized, we want the, but, but oftentimes you might wait a season or so. With the binder, oftentimes GPW might want, you know, to go a season before we top it.
Can, can we put i- in parentheses after road binder only or something like that? Does that satisfy you, Rob?
Yeah, that would be great, yeah, just.
Does that work for you Jeff?
Well, uh, um, I just wanna play out a scenario where um, we're talking ten years until that last unit is, is in place with a CO, I mean, ha- has the binder been in place for ten years?
Yes, so maybe what we want, maybe what we're trying to say though is that, um, uh, like, it's really the road to the units that are looking for COs that are, that have the top coat on, right? And, and, but maybe units that haven't been built yet, don't have the top coat on yet.
Or we could do a timeframe, maybe if you said, you know, uh, you know, binder would be down and then maybe, you know, i- if, if, uh, you know, as long as top coat's down within, say, a year and a half or two years, whatever it might be. Um, that might make, that might be logical, but whatever you think is appropriate.
This isn't gonna be a.
Maybe the parenthetical says top coat within eighteen months or something instead of binder only?
Is this road gonna be maintained by the city or by the HOA?
HOA.
HOA.
If I'm understanding correctly, it said you, your point here was that you would damage the road with equipment while you're constructing other stuff if you, you know, put the top coat down too early. In which case, from what you just said, I mean, it's really kind of a decision on our part, is that's tough, they have to do it twice or we wait until they're done with the project and it may just be that the top coat doesn't go down till the end of the project, so that they don't have to do it twice.
Yeah, but remember too Jim, that like, the CO is kinda like the carrot for all of this, right? So we have had certain developments where they don't finish that last one percent of stuff because they already got their COs and sold units. So like, it, we, we, it sort of cuts both ways where we lose our, our teeth to get these things done, but um, I think if we say top coat within eighteen months of first unit, does that work?
Sorry, 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 sorry.
Yeah, that, that seems, that would be great for us, I think that would be fair, and then that still gives you guys the, the teeth that you're looking for to make sure it's finished properly.
Sounds good.
Um, any comments or questions from members of the public, uh, based on this draft decision before we take a vote? Again, you can raise a virtual hand or a physical hand or even on a mute. Alright, seeing none.
Ready for me?
I will take a motion.
A motion to approve the special permit for Cynthia Stepler, uh, seeking an eighteen-unit multifamily residential development on, uh, sixty-nine and seventy-three Loudville Road.
Can I get a second?
Oh yeah, a second then.
Alright.
I was, I was waiting for like with the conditions applied or something, it was ready for the rest of it.
Not going through it again. Uh, alright, so voting to approve the special permit with conditions, Mr. Zarvis.
Aye.
Mr. Cockshaw.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Brenda.
No.
And I am an I. So thus ends the saga of the Loudville Road development, uh, in front of the planning board, at least for now. Um, so, thank you to everyone, I know this was a hard one, um, I appreciate everyone's effort and cooperation.
Thank you very much for your time, special thanks to, uh, Mr. Bag and, uh, and, um, new planner, new assistant planner, thank you. We appreciate your time.
And I'll, I'll, I'll flip that to thank the board members, this has been a good, and it's been long, but it's been a good discussion and um, it's an important one, so I appreciate the board members' time too.
And thank you to the public for all of your input as well. Um, alright, moving right along, uh, next up on the agenda is the continued public hearing for Appicall Inc. Seeking a special permanent intersection ten point ten and twelve point seven of the zoning ordinance. Um, to operate as a recreational cannabis retail establishment property located at one oh two North Hampton Street in the Highway Business Zoning District. Alright, and we got a flurry of information on this one today or yesterday too, is there someone who can update us on where we are now for the applicant?
I'll do it.
Thank you Attorney Fryman.
Good evening, everyone, um, and with me, we have our whole team, I think it will take a long time to introduce everyone, so, um, but any specialty area, we have someone here that can cover it, so. But I will, um, I will mention that Attorney Michael Pill is on the line, he's representing our landlord, one oh two North Hampton Street LLC. There were some questions that came up that were relevant to, um, to the property owner, and so the, to those questions, um, I will, um, ask that Mr. Pill address those, um, that information, so, um, the, uh, where we left off, we're just some questions regarding, um, where, um, we were putting some, uh, planters for geo-traffic control. Um, and we provided a revised site plan that shows the location of where we're gonna put planters, it also shows that we're changing the parking to angled parking, which was one of the suggestions uh, from our neighbors, and that's, uh, was a good suggestion. We also, um, have a, we found a two thousand fifteen survey, uh, so now we have the exact boundaries of the, the property, so that's reflected in the revised site plan. Um, we, um, uh, answered questions regarding the traffic, um, design and the, the flow of traffic on site. Um, I think that, um, it, we've tightened all that up. Um, and as, as far as I know, you know, we've, we've addressed the questions that have come up, um, we've provided a queue plan, um. Hmm. Yeah, most of the, the issues were just regarding the control of traffic, um, you know, on site, and we'll I mentioned that we will have a track, a traffic attendant on site at all times to help with the flow of traffic. We're not expecting to have, you know, a major, um, influx of cars, uh, at, at any one time, I think, you know, we're hoping it will be steady and, uh, and there's ample parking to, um, uh, to address of, you know, to, so that we're not having a bottleneck or uh, on North, you know, coming off of North Hampton Street, we don't expect any queuing to take place off-site. Um, so, uh, in the beginning, it, when the store's open, to the extent necessary, we would hire police detail to, to help direct traffic and, uh, what are the, so the question that came up regarding, um, the exit onto Mountain View Street was, you know, what right do we have to Mountain View Street? And, um, that we've provided, uh, information to support that, uh, that we do have the right as a tenant because our landlord has the right to Mountain View, to, to access Mountain View Street. So I'm, I can, um, have, uh, Attorney Pill address that and explain how we derive that ownership and how our landlord derived that ownership, which is a private way. Um, and, you know, and then you can, uh, any additional questions that you have, we're prepared to, uh, to answer them.
Okay, great, so I think the more I was thinking about this, you know, I think our, any decision we have would require this sort of one-way traffic flow from North Hampton Street and then out Mountain View. So, uh, I'm not sure that the issue of access to that road is particularly something that we have to concern ourselves with, I think that would be, you know, assuming someone could restrict your access, that could be catastrophic from your perspective, but you would have to come back and modify it or what have you, so I don't know that that really becomes as big an issue as it seemed last meeting.
And we don't see it as an issue for us.
Excellent, so I was just gonna ask, there were a couple tweaks to the actual traffic flow as far as the planters and things like that, and we've seen a lot of this, but I don't know that necessarily the public has, so I just wondered if you could walk through or someone could walk through um, just the changes to this, and one of the questions that I had asked last time that, when I drove by it this week, I was looking again. Um, just trying to figure out, and I know the Captain Jack situation is sort of up in the air and who knows what will be happening whenever this is done, but they, they have another curb cut, but they're currently using this entrance way, is that right?
Uh, I'm not familiar with that, so maybe Cot could address that.
Cot, are you there?
Y- yes, I'm, I'm here, uh, yes.
Right now, for Captain Jack's, they're going in that, that entrance, right, but there is a one further down the street that is the plan that they'll go through that entrance if they're there?
Yes, yes, that is the plan, that is the future plan, is for the, for the curb cut. Correct.
And so then I think there was a change, and maybe this is back to Ellen or somebody else, but as far as what's gonna be blocking off that route that currently heads into that adjoining parking lot, is there, there's gonna be physical planters, right?
There's gonna be planters.
Okay.
Um, on the plan.
Right. Okay, those are my questions, planning board members, any other questions?
I don't, I can, uh, take a minute and just direct you to where the change is, or so you're all familiar with them.
That'd be great.
Okay, so, uh, we still come in one way, the, uh, entrance that exists, the curb cut exists, however, um, the parking, as soon as you come in, it, it previously was perpendicular to North Hampton Street. Now, uh, using your great suggestion of angled parking, it actually forces that one-way traffic. So they will come in, as you can see, and then go up the one-way alongside the building, then out back to, uh, Mountain View. The other change was that the, um, it, it's actually just a graphic change, there was previously a chain and reflector, uh, along that property line to the right, all the way from North Hampton Street, all the way up, it just couldn't be seen on the drawing because it was a dotted line. So now it's a solid blue line and it's noted, uh, exactly where it is. The bicycle rack stays exactly where it is. Discussions between the neighboring property and this property, uh, had us move, uh, do not enter in one-way signs onto the property that's being, uh, in question, not on the neighbor's property. And, um, the, uh, s- uh, diagonal hatch marks that, uh, we discussed are actually shown now in the area that is existing asphalt, but it's gonna be painted with the striped lines on the diagonal rather than solid. So you can see those, and that's typically, we all know, the, the diagonal hash lines tell us not to park. Uh, other than that, uh, everything else stays the same, the planters are noted and they are, uh, individual planters that could be moved. And just to be on the safe side, I'm suggesting to the owners that the planters also have spacers underneath them. Enough so that the water flow stays and, and, you know, everything's clear with that and we're not pushing water in a, in a, in a way that's on the neighboring property or anything to that effect. Um, unless you have other questions, those were the major changes, and I think it added, uh, a lot better, uh, direction to the flow of traffic, uh, at least the vehicular flow.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Comments, questions from planning board members, Jim?
Uh, yes, I've read in the document that was produced that you're going to have an attendant, um, all the time, and possibly a police officer in the first opening day, but an attendant regularly to direct traffic flow, correct?
Correct.
In, in, that's in the winter and the cold weather, is there a place for that attendant to be, or are they just sitting outside, like, how, how would that work exactly?
Cot, if you wanna answer that, please.
Uh, yes, there, 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 there will be, um, somebody, uh, right there at the, um, door entrance, so as somebody's exiting, um, there'll be somebody watching to make sure that, um, that, uh, in guy- guiding, um, um, the customer to let them know that they have to go out the, uh, one-way direction and to follow the signs. Um, there'll be somebody out there in and out from the door depending on the cold and, um, they'll be entering, exiting to make sure as um, customers are leaving, to make sure that they're gonna be leaving, um, in a one-way direction. I mean, we can't let them freeze out there, right, and I can build something out there for them, I don't think it makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Brenda?
Hi, yeah, I just had a, a couple of questions, um, where are we with the lighting plan? I saw the attachment where you go through the lighting of, you know, all the rooms and the exterior, which was really great. But no new, you're not adding any new lighting outdoors, you're just using the current poles that were there, that whole thing, okay?
Right.
And then my other, it, it's not really a question, I just got to thinking about pedestrian access, so it looks like pedestrians can use that ten feet wide right-of-way to walk up and around the building that way, right? And I don't think there's a sidewalk on that side of the street, is there?
No.
Yeah, so, okay. Alright, thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Harry? You're muted, Harry.
How, how this gonna, uh, affect people that are trying to get the Cernac fuel? Getting in that driveway.
Cot?
Uh, which, which driveway to, which Cernac fuel? You're talking about the, the existing building in the front or the back?
I think, I think he's getting at what we sort of started to talk about last week, which is, you know, it's, it's a one-way, but presumably for people still going to that Cernac fuel business, they'll be able to cut there to the left, is that the plan, is that gonna be marked, how's that gonna be handled?
They, I mean, they, they can cut there, that's their property, they have the right to way there, um, to enter there, it's just for our customers. Um, we'll have a sign for our customers that they won't be able to exit because of our direction and our one-way and our, our hostess will let them know as they're inside our facility as well, that they're gonna be exiting out the one-way and to follow the signs, we're gonna be, we, I mean, we're gonna really let people know that they have to exit a specific way.
A- and so where that ten-foot right-of-way is marked on this drawing, but there's no physical obstacle there, right? It's just gonna be arrows directing customers for Appicall to the right, and if someone's coming to Cernac, they can make their left turn, there won't be anything they have to get through or over.
Yes.
And that's what they've always done, so nothing changes.
Right. Uh, Austin? Oh, you're muted. I can't hear you, Austin.
It shows you unmuted, but it doesn't show that you're making any sense.
Yeah, you might have to get those headphones back in.
Alright, he's working on it.
One thing we can do, Austin, if you wanna type your message to me, I can, I can read it to the board, or you can put it in chat for everybody to read, and we can go from there.
He was talking earlier with the headphones on fine, so I think once he's.
Hear me now?
Yeah, there you go, Austin, thank you.
Um, following, uh, Brenda's good question about, um, pedestrians pointing out that there isn't a sidewalk, um, uh, for pedestrians accessing the site, I was wondering if Cot was, um, presuming that pedestrians would come walking from, along the planters either direction, is that just the idea, since there's no sidewalk?
Uh, yeah, tha- that's the idea, it's for, yes, correct.
I just wanted to check that good point from Brenda.
Thanks, Austin, um, any other questions from planning board members or planning department? Alright, uh, how about public questions? Um, anybody can either raise their virtual hand on Zoom or their physical hand or unmute and ask to address us? I don't see anybody scrolling through, Jeff or Curtis, do you see anybody?
Yeah, I see.
Leslie Cernac with her hand up, uh, Leslie should be able to unmute yourself, and if you wanna go ahead and do so, well, Jesse, you can tell her, sorry.
That's fine, Leslie, if you can. Oh, you're still muted.
There you go, okay, now you're unmuted.
There you go.
Okay, great, thank you, yeah, um, I just received the updated information afternoon today. So in all fairness, I haven't had a chance to review it, in fact, I'm just seeing the new site plan right now. I wasn't even aware that it existed prior to this, um. I remain opposed to the plan, um. But I do need to review the information a little bit closer, the, the information that I've just, uh, received. One of the concerns that I have that Brenda brought up is this walkway. I think that's a terrible place for a crosswalk.
I think that's a terrible place for a crosswalk because you've got Apocall cars coming in and going right. You have potential CERNAC fuel customers both going in and out of that entrance. And one of my original concerns is you could have somebody coming in, say, Mountain View Street. Or there's also a missing curb cut there. You could have somebody coming in there trying to cross over where there would be pedestrians. So I I don't think that's going to work very well. Also, I'm not clear here. Will there be an attendant right out on North Hampton Street if it's cold? Or is the attendant only going to be inside now?
I mean, the attendant will be where they need to be, where the person needs to be. If there's, if it's, you know, I think when the store first opens, the attendant will be out and helping to, you know, show the, direct the the traffic as necessary. If we need to have additional police detail, we will have that at both entrances. When it gets cold in the winter, you know, when it gets very cold and they can't be outside, I think, you know, depending on the how heavy the traffic is coming in. Or, you know, we'll just have to to base it on what's happening and, you know, how busy the store is and what the how busy the traffic is. I don't know how many, especially through the winter, how many pedestrians we will come in, you know, have access to the property off of North Hampton Street. I don't expect there will be too many. But I think that, I don't think the traffic coming out on that, on the ten-foot strip from the fuel facility would necessarily match the time, you know, the heavier time when we expect customers to come. I think it might be on, you know, weekends and and evenings would be a busier time. So I think, you know, I don't see any issue with the, you having both owners, you know, and are accessing the same access way. So.
If I might might also add some information regarding the pedestrian access. I think it's misunderstood. That ten-foot right-of-way, actually, it's a legal right-of-way that exists on the survey that was found. It's not intended to be a crosswalk for pedestrians. There is no sidewalk to crosswalk from. So I think what was asked is, could they use that area to walk up? Answer is yes, they could. They could use any of that area where the the hatching is over the existing asphalt that's there. Probability is because there is no sidewalk, the number of pedestrians is going to be extremely low. And they could walk across between any of those planters, the entire width of that whole property.
And Jeff, remind me, when we've done these in the past, we've done that sort of the opening day plan where there's been a temporary plan for sort of the anticipated influx. And then we've had review, is it, we've done it after sixty days in the past? So I'm I'm thinking that we would probably do something like that where I know there's mention in here of sort of a general queuing plan, but I think that what we found in the past is sort of making sure that there's police details and people, you know, extra staffing for those first two months. And then, you know, the applicant would come back and we would either put in place the typical queuing plan or sometimes we might look at it and say, this is still kind of crazy. Why don't you keep this up for another sixty days? And sort of work that way, but while things sort of settle down at a new facility. And I I don't think that's been a problem in the past, but thinking of the issue with the pedestrian and sort of travel across parking lots, you know, that's exactly the sort of thing that might might crop up as a problem. It doesn't seem like it's going to be a big one based on what we're looking at here to me. But if it does, it's certainly something we could still address with continuing that opening plan.
Yeah, we're agreed, agree to that.
Yeah, I really like that idea because I also, you know, if an attendant isn't needed, I don't think they should have to have one. I mean, I think liberty's open, right? Yeah, there there's really no, there would be absolutely no need for an attendant there. So, um, yeah, I love that idea of the sixty-day kind of, let's see how it goes and tweak it if needed. But I I'd hate to have him commit to, you know, an attendant.
Yeah, and and Brenda, that's where we've we've run into sort of the the cut both ways, right? Like, you'd love to look at it after two weeks or a month, but then you're making the applicant come in all the time.
Yeah.
And you don't want to say ninety days because things could change for better or worse, and you don't have oversight. So I think that sixty days seems to work pretty well, at least it hasn't in the past. But it does let us still have some ongoing oversight of sort of what's happening with the business flow and the traffic and the pedestrians, which I think would be really helpful here, because I I think even less than we did at the beginning, I don't think we really know what the first two months will look like when a new facility opens.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I think it, I think it's, it was my note about the parking attendant is that the idea is that you ultimately get your special permit, and there is always sort of an operating plan attached to it. But what what the board has been great at trying to do is acknowledge that within the first sixty days is the probably the greatest variation of change. So you want to have kind of your first sixty-day plan, which would likely include the parking attendant, and then you can come in. And as things settle down, you you would be able to change your operating plan to match what you're actually doing. It's not really calling back the the special permit in any way, but it's just saying that you'll have this operating plan approved at all times. Just acknowledging that the first sixty days seems like we're where we get the highest variation. So I think that's where the parking attendant should go, and I just want to make sure that people understand, like, it really shouldn't be a permanent condition of the approval based on the potential for it to not be necessary in the long run. And I see Curtis is looking like he wants to say something too.
One thing I wanted to add to that, and and Kat, if you just want to confirm whether this makes sense to you, as you're the expert on the subject. But one thing I I observe with marijuana retail facilities right now is that during COVID nineteen, almost all of them have a a a employee or employees like a parking attendant who will check IDs out in the parking lot while you're still in your car before permitting you entry. So that function may organically already be part of the function of the marijuana retail site. Kat, I I recognize, I I'm not the business owner here, so I can't make a proposal, but does that at least sound like something that exists in the world to you?
Yes, it does.
Okay, great, so.
There's also the ongoing issue, the obligation to sort of prevent, you know, use on-site and sort of some of the things that people have been concerned about, like loitering in the parking lot. So I think that all these businesses have sort of, they have their own interest.
Some employee, yeah.
Yeah, they're they're keeping the parking lot supervised and making sure things are working, and while they're doing that, they're making sure every other part of the parking lot's working as well.
Another thing I wanted to add really quickly, and I also see that Jeff had his hand up again, um, is Arctic Nardi, would you terribly mind confirming? My observation is that there's another curb cut. Not that doesn't provide, that would not provide access to the part of the parcel owned by Apocall. But it it's further down towards Mountain View, and it would still provide access to the the small CERNAC parcel to the site southwest.
There is something there. I did not see it on the on the on the survey that was discovered, but there's something there that could be some type of access, correct?
If you pull it up on Google Maps, it it it, whether or not it is an official curb cut, there is at least something there. I'm not certain.
There is, yeah.
Yeah, many, many times they they like not to have curb cuts too close to a corner of a street.
Yeah, I I strongly agree, but.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I know there's a couple of different people who've raised hands, so I'm going to mute myself again. I know that Jeff had a comment and.
Yeah, Jeff.
I, yes, I just wanted to go back to COVID, the COVID plan, just real quick, because it's, it's just this strange reality that we're in. You know, I think the idea is that you have the operating plan that gets approved by the board. And if there are additional significant changes related to COVID, you know, we do have, we have built in a a process where you 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 would be coming back to the board to present really significant changes that might be necessary to address COVID, and we're hope, we're more hopeful maybe with the vaccine on a horizon that will be, will be trending away from having these requirements. But what we saw with the approvals for the other retail establishments was it was never even on the radar screen. And so we called back each of the operating retail establishments to to present a COVID plan to the planning board. So if you look at INSA, for example, you know, they they went to an extreme where they built kiosks for their employees to be in an enclosed space. But that went to the planning board for review and was approved based on the fact that as long as we're we're dealing with COVID, then there could be this alternative arrangement. So just keep that in the back of your mind that as you open, as you get closer to opening, you know, if it's in this, if it's in the late winter, you know, and you're dealing with a significant COVID issue, such that they were not allowed, you're not allowed people inside the building or something, then then we do want to have you come back with a COVID-specific plan just to address that. But it's, it is a flexi- a flexibility that we see the need for coming, coming out of COVID. So that's, that's about all I wanted to say about that.
Thanks, Jeff. Uh, Jim?
I Jesse, I love your point and frankly, everything everyone's saying here. I just want to have stayed real quick from you, if you could confirm, when we come back for the sixth day or say even the COVID plan, what is the role of approval on our part or no approval and a butters being notified and their ability to speak in or make comment in that process?
So we have, what what we've done in the past is we make a condition to the special permit that says that there is, that there always be a valid operation plan in place. And in theory, we could continue the opening plan for years, you know, if that's what seems to be working. That is, it's not a modification where we've scheduled that hearing out sixty days, if I remember right, Jeff. So I I don't know that there's a butter notification, but I think that they are still a there's still public participation like any other public meeting, and and we have certainly taken comments in the past. I think that's often a valuable resource for sort of how the first sixty days have gone. Jeff, am I right that it's because it's not a new permit or a modification, there's no a butters notification, it's just a, it's in the decision?
Correct. And, you know, there are, there are a couple of conditions. I can't reference the exact project, but there are, there is a way that if the board felt it was critical to have the applicant notify, especially the butters, you know, of this public meeting. So there is a way to make sure that, I mean, in this clear, in this case in particular, there's in such close proximity, especially to that front parcel, that it might be something that the board considers as part of the condition that that public meeting involve the applicant with with just a notice of the meeting. You know, it's not a formal hearing, but at least it would give them some opportunity for notice. So that could be built into the condition.
Yep, I think that's great. Any other comments or questions? Did I see another hand up? Harry?
Yeah, what kind of a security team do we have working here in this thing?
Security? We've submitted a security plan, and we have our consultant on participating tonight if you have specific questions.
Well, I mean, they had, you know, they had some guy monitoring cameras, they had another guy, you know, checking IDs. It was, there was like four or five guys working there. I'm just curious how many, how big your your security team is going to be here, so.
We can tell you, we can give you a little overview right now, if you'd like that.
Yeah, that'd be great, Ellen.
Okay, that Steve that will provide that, Kat?
Yep.
Yes.
With AC Free Consulting, a consultant for Apocall. We've opened up probably twelve retails in the state so far. We've been part of that team. And, you know, Kat's plan is to train managers and employees, the security functions. And we'll also have dedicated security agents. So we will have somebody checking IDs prior to the entering the building, once they're in the building, and then again, again, at point of sales. During COVID, you know, we're going to have to kind of see where we are with COVID, you know, coming close to to opening time, but you know, if that happens, we will kind of do what, you know, insurance and the other groups are having. We're going to have people in the parking lot if we have curbside operations at that point. Again, you know, you know, there's a light at the end of the tunnel, we hope, you know, with the vaccines and stuff. But, you know, as we get closer, we will plan for that. So we won't have third-party like security agents there in uniform or anything. They are going to be Apocall agents, and they will be trained on security functions. You know, the cameras, how to deal with, you know, customers, all of that. They'll they'll get good training prior to starting their, their job functions.
Thanks, Steve. Harry, does that address your questions? Thanks. I I see Rick Cernac has a hand up. Mr. Cernac? Can you just give your address to Rick before you start for the record? Thanks.
Sure, Rick Cernac for Strathrow Properties, one hundred North Hampton Street, and I live in Williamsburg. I had a question for for Ellen. She had mentioned that they found a two thousand fifteen survey. Did she mean nineteen eighty-five? Or did she mean twenty fifteen?
Ellen, what was the date on that survey that you found?
Yeah, I believe it was a twenty fifteen date on the survey.
I'll check it. I'll check it.
The recorded survey was nineteen eighty-five. That, it's it's still on record. There may have been another twenty fifteen plan. But the one that I sent to the planning board and that the the consultant used to revise the plan that's on the screen now that is, I believe, the nineteen eighty-five survey, but nothing has changed. And to make sure of that, last, after the last meeting, the owners, one oh two North Hampton Street, engaged the surveyor who went out there and marked the the boundaries on the ground.
Michael, I'm terribly sorry. Could I ask you to identify yourself for the record?
I'm sorry. Michael Pill, attorney Michael Pill, Green Miles Lipton. And I'm here on behalf of the the landlord, one oh two North Hampton Street, which is the former Cernac Buick property. Thank you, Chris. Sorry for that.
No problem. And before I surrender the floor again, I wanted to say that from my recollection from the survey plan I have, I have it dated to nineteen eighty-five.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And I think I think Rick had further questions. I think.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, if Ellen does have a two thousand fifteen survey, if she would share that with the board and the public, that would be terrific. And also Michael Pill, and I'm sure Michael will get in touch with our attorney if that comes up. So, um, I wanted to also thank Jeff Bag for astutely bringing up the the point about Mountain View Street being a private way last meeting. And it looks like we're beginning to make some progress here with our attorney and the attorney for one oh two North Hampton Street, Michael Pill. And so I am optimistic. We're hopeful that in the coming weeks, we'll be able to report to the planning board that the necessary agreements will have been executed. But we're, there's still quite a bit of work to do. And officially, for Strathrow Properties, we still do oppose this, but we're looking for let's see, the the progress. One of the things I can report to is that I went out today and measured the lines that Michael Pill was referring to, and they look to be verifiable. I measured the distance on them, and they look correct to the nineteen eighty-five survey, so I'm very pleased. I have one question, and I'm not sure, this may be for Kat or Mr. Nardi. I noticed something new here, the no parking area on Mountain View Street, right below the word "street." And I presume that's something that Kat and Leslie and I and Jeff Cernac and Jennifer Cernac talked about. And that's a space that we've been using traditionally for Cernac fuel vehicles. And so I'm looking to have that revised, just to say, Cernac fuel vehicles only in that area. Yep. And if I'm incorrect, please let me know.
Kat?
Uh, we put no parking there because Leslie based the concern that she didn't want, she was worried about Apocall customers coming up the private way and parking there and walking across the Cernac fuel property. So that's why we put the no parking there to make sure that nobody comes and parks on that side and impedes on your property. But if you want it for just your vehicle, I mean, we could just put for a Cernac fuel vehicle, that's fine with me. But I mean, I don't see an issue with it.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And I think that would be best. That would be more precise.
Okay.
Thanks, Rick. Leslie? I think you're muted still, Leslie, sorry.
Hearing now?
Yes.
Yeah, good. Okay. So back to the entrance situation again. Again, this is all new for me. I'm seeing it for the first time. As Curtis pointed out, there is a missing curb cut in this design. I, I'm very concerned about safety with flow of traffic, and and as I had mentioned at the last meeting, there was a situation which prompted us to put up barriers to stop the flow of traffic. there was a situation which prompted us to put up uh barriers to stop the flow of traffic from Captain Jack's. With no attendant in place, I guess this comes down to signage and um, what is the plan for an entrance sign? Or how is that gonna be clear for Apocal? I know, I know you've got the arrows. Are you gonna put those arrows on this pavement now? Are you gonna put the signs uh specifically entrance for Apocal?
Todd, do you wanna mention the signage?
Al, can you explain that?
Hey, I'm not sure I understand the question, if you wouldn't mind repeating it.
Al, maybe I can help with this. So I, I think what Leslie's asking is what is the actual signage gonna be at the entrance there? I think to make clear, first of all, where the one way is for Apocal and also what it's saying as far as making that left turn over into Sernac Fuels area. What's gonna make that clear?
The intention was that, you know, they would work it out between the two of them, exactly what they'd wanted to say. The intended neat uh use of the sign, the first one is to say entrance only. This is not a place where you exit. You know, the two-sided type sign, so you could see it from both sides.
Yep.
And the one further up where it says no exit, meaning don't take a, don't come out to this Trenac property to exit. You've gotta go to the right, just like all, everything else is showing you. And uh, it's, if the, someone's coming to that other property, they're gonna already do what they do now. They're coming into that curb cut, using that right away and going into their property. So nothing changes for them because they would have already been into the property before they get up to that sign. That sign is only if someone's going the wrong way. For some crazy reason, they're going that they, they back out of that angle parking and they're really, you know, they're not paying attention and they're going the wrong way. That sign is to say, don't come this way. Turn around and go back. That's the intention of it. The exact wording is up to, you know, the two property owners, so they both agree as to what they hope the public to see.
Okay, so so maybe that's something that could come back um for the next meeting is a, is a hopefully an agreed upon plan, but at least a specific proposal from the applicant as far as what the signage would say.
Yeah.
Um, to to make that clear. Um, Jeff?
So what we're talking about that's, I, you know, I see the parking space where the number five is written. I mean, so my understanding is that there would be stripe, painted stripes to delineate the area where the bike rack is, for example.
Correct.
Um, you know, that, that, it sounds sort of piddly to 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 ask about this, but it seems like that sign is just oddly placed. Um, it it would be potentially within what would appear to be a drive aisle and floating. So I'd be worried if I parked my vehicle in parking space that's with the five and were, and then backed up. It seems like it would be in a, that that sign would be in a terrible spot.
Jeff, I agree, I agree. It should be up in the hatched area.
I, okay, I think I think that would just be, it's a minor revision, just to deal with where that time would get located. And then, and and I have not been um, looking at the plans as carefully as Curtis, but is there some key or place that denotes what is painted on the road versus what's a label for the plan? So
What's paint, what's painted on the road are the arrows and the wording and the words one way?
Okay, but would, so the one way is written two ways right there. And I guess just clarity on, like, so one of the things that, as we get closer, it seems like we're getting closer, which is good. Um, you know, we wanna really be clear for uh, the building inspector who will go out, you know, when when Cott's ready for his certificate of occupancy to open, to have this plan and have real clarity as to what should have been painted and what it was a label and just, I I think there's, we're close, but it has gotta be a little bit better way to to know what's painted.
Um, I, I think maybe the better, the better thing to help out is just to post shade those painted arrows and the painted words, so you can actually see them stronger than the notes, if you will.
Something, yeah.
I know, I know what you're talking about.
Indicate, Al, I think what what's gonna actually be on the property versus what's just on the map and um, and then also again, the the specific language for what will be on the signs, hopefully with with input from the the neighbors there.
Yeah, and some of those signs can be two-sided. So you know, it really, the direction is very clear.
Yep, I think that's great. Um, and so that, and then, I mean, as we were talking about before, I think um, coming back with an opening an opening day plan for that first sixty day period for sort of how that will be with the understanding, you know, Ellen, that that doesn't have to be a permanent plan. It's just what you would sort of have for what might be a sixty day crunch when you open up. Um, and then realizing that we might be able to dial that back hopefully after that, or maybe hopefully not. Maybe that just means business is going great. So um, those are the two things I can think of right now. Any other comments or questions from the public on this? Rick, yep?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I do like the angle parking. I think that's a great improvement to the plan. Um, if uh, if I think it's Curtis who's controlling the screen, go to the back corner of this parcel, back left.
As long as Mark's doing a good job.
That's good. Okay, so what I see here is where it says existing curb cut, I would like to see a sign that says no right turn. Um, if I were buying some uh, some of the product and I wanted to go someplace to uh, to smoke it or do whatever I'm gonna do with it, I would wanna take a right turn, go to the dead end here and take a parking, you know, just bargain Mountain View Street. Um, and um, I wanna see this plan do anything it can do to prevent that from happening. So.
Rick, can you, can you and Todd have that discussion before the next meeting? Um, I I'd love it if you guys can come back with a plan, sort of with an agreed upon signage plan, but if we need to sort of make a determination at the next meeting, I'm happy to. But I think that that's the kind of stuff that will be easier if you guys have that conversation offline and come back with a, with a plan.
Sure, and that was raised. Um, sure.
Yep, that'd be great.
And that's all I have right now.
Jesse, Jesse?
Yes.
Just agree to the sign now? I mean, there, that's fine.
That, that's fine. I mean, so Todd, I think that, I mean, we're gonna have to continue this meeting anyway. We're gonna have to come back with the opening day plan and revise signage and the the markings on the street. So I, I, I just don't wanna waste time tonight with you guys hashing that out. Um, I think that's fine if you wanna agree to that. I don't, I don't see any reason why you wouldn't, but um, it, we, I mean, we can't, we can't do, we can't vote on a decision tonight anyway. So I think that's just easier to be done offsite.
Okay, that, that's fine, but I do wanna explain something. I mean,
Sure.
If you look at other cannabis retailers, I mean, what we've done here is over the top and it's kinda overkill with one-way signs, with signs everywhere with no right turns or anything like that. If you go to Insta, you don't have that there. You go to Liberty, you don't have that there. You go to Cannabis Connection, you don't have that there. I mean, we've done a lot to this site plan to make, to accommodate safety and pedestrian uh, travel or vehicle travels. I mean, there's a lot done to this site plan and and I think it's kind of, I mean, all these little minor things we can do, it's not a problem, but we're kinda pushing everything back and nitpicking on these little things. And I just find that it's just, I mean, I, I mean, I don't even know what to say.
Uh, I, I would say, Todd, this would, i- if we voted tonight, it would probably be the quickest cannabis dispensary we've voted on so far in East Hampton. And we do spend a lot of time, you may not even notice it looking at the other sites. We spent a ton of time looking at onsite traffic at Liberty, where they were using parking, adjoining parking in that garage by the hair salon, and we had to put, you know, discuss signage for that. So I know it feels that way and I, and I real, I, I think you're ninety-nine percent of the way here. Um, but we, we are gonna have to continue mostly because we're gonna have to put together a draft decision to go through, as you just saw us do with the last applicant. But we're gonna need an opening day plan and we're gonna need a revised, I mean, right now, as Jeff says, you know, with the, with the markings on this map, it's gonna be hard for us to tell the building inspector what to look for when the project's in place. So my hope is that it's just those last few minor things, unless something, somebody has other issues, and then we can have a vote on this at the next meeting.
Okay.
Uh, any other comments or question, Jeff?
I'll defer to Ms. Fryman and and anyone else. I do have a couple of quick things to note, but I I can wait.
Okay, Ellen?
I just wanted to add that we did provide uh, an opening day plan and that we will have an attendant and that we're gonna have the police detail and we'll keep that until we're come back for the sixty days. So.
That's, that's fine. I wanted to give you a chance to, if you wanted to either back it off or make it stronger with the understanding now that it's not a permanent plan, it doesn't have to be your permanent queuing plan. There, there is gonna be a review after sixty days.
All right, well, okay, so.
That's up to you if you wanna change it or not.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Jeff?
Um, I see Curtis too. Um, I had quick questions about the planters and the chains denoted.
Yep.
That, and so I would like to defer to also to Curtis, but um, could you scroll to the page right a little bit? Um, what I was curious about, I, I think I appreciate and understand the concept. Um, again, Todd, I think when we look at the other site developments, it is this level of detail and and you know, it's, it's having certainty as to what's gonna happen when, after the board says yes, that that's it. So um, I just wanna be kinda clear on the, the number of planters. So to to set the expectation that, you know, per the plan, there, there will be someone who goes out there and counts them and make sure their position is shown. Um, the thing that eludes me is I, I, I've seen and I've appreciated the planters that um, Sernac Buick has had out front um, for, for the past, let's say, year. Um, they're nice, they're ceramic, they're of a certain size, and I think it's really important for the board to have an understanding of what you expect to put out there. Um, are these going to be, um, what, what material will they be and what size are you expecting to put there? I think it's, it's actually important because it is the only thing that's gonna delineate, you know, this, this paved area from one, from one area to another. So I think spec, specifications on what you, what you're envisioning for the planters and the board making sure that that, they feel it's sufficient to create the delineator. And then, to me, it's just unclear the chain and wh- what would the chains be mounted on. Um, you know, I wanna make sure that this is not a tire rim with a metal post stuck out there. I mean, I think we're, we're far beyond, you know, the other cannabis establishments that you mentioned that have undergone, undergone hundreds of thousands of dollars of site work to get to where they are. And so you're, we are, we are kinda really working with you because the, 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 the number of site changes here are are totally minimal. So again, I just wanna make sure that we're not talking about a wheel rim with a metal post with some plastic chain. Um, I think we really need to get down to some details onto what the delineators are gonna be. So I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just trying to, there is, there is some level of detail that we wanna get to in the next step.
Jeff, I think that could be easily provided. I understand what you're looking for.
Thanks, Al. Um, Curtis, did you still have something?
Yeah, I, I echo Jeff's sentiments. What I would really be looking for is a detail, but like a de, a cut sheet detail for um, what your final signage will look like, uh, what the chain and reflector will look like, what the post for the chainer, chain and reflector will look like and what the planters will look like. And if there's any variation amongst the planters, because there's some planters already extant and some new planters that you're gonna be installing. Um, in their note, uh, Attorney Fryman, you reflected that the species will be picked out uh, at planting season. Uh, obviously, that's to the, subject to the approval of the board, but one thing I'd say is if we can just get a sense of the scale and scope of the planters, because there's an enormous difference between one of those enormous concrete ones versus the small decorative ones that you have out front. Not to say that either one's bad, just to say that there's literally a difference. Um, but yeah, if we could get a, a detail of those, um, the chains and their superstructure that connects them to the ground, that'd be great. Um, if in the, and I speak personally for myself and I let the, the, the board obviously can differ from this, but one thing that I would want in, in, is, is a comprehensive like paint sheet. So everything that you're doing that's gonna be paint, if you could just do in one color, because right now, uh, just from this view that we see here, I've heard uh, the applicant state that they're going to paint this, the lines that you see making up the parking, the lines that connect to the parking that are the, the, like, the faux curbing that you see there, the red arrows that direct people through the site and the boxed words uh, one way in the pavement. Um, in addition, one way is portrayed in two different sizes. So if you just wanna go ahead and and create one comprehensive paint schedule that says, this is how all of this will look that the board can sign off on, I think that'd be best. Um.
And the contractor can use to paint.
Right, and then that, and then the, the, the building inspector can say, yes, this was done according to style. That's great.
I understand, I understand.
While you're providing details, if you could provide a detail for the enclosure for the dumpster. Um, I think these would, all these would forearm the board to have no further questions at that point. And then those are, those are my set of questions on um, on the details that you, that you all are going over based on the conversation we just had with the board.
Thanks, Curtis.
Uh, Jesse, if I, if I may.
Yeah.
What I did do is I, I made note to show that there's a planter in front of every parking space, as you can see there. Get up to where there's an existing, looks like a maintenance building, uh, just where a shed and then it stopped, then I stopped there because you can't go past there anyways. So that's where the planters would stop where that existing shed is. And people are sitting to the far right of that shed, picnic tables and so forth, that type of thing.
Okay, that's helpful. Thanks, Al.
You're welcome.
Um, any other questions or comments from planning board members? Austin?
Yeah, just following Curtis's point. Um, if you could go to the curb cut, if you could um, zoom in there and um, read for me again, what's in the box, X box there, where there's two fonts.
Oh, up above, they both say right of way?
It says ten foot right of way.
Yeah, it, on top of itself in a different script.
And 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 superimposed in opposite directions.
Yeah, it just needs to be cleaned up. And I, I would.
I think what you're seeing, I think what you're seeing is, is something that's happening through the emailing and so forth, because on my copy, it doesn't exist.
Yeah, it sounds, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Chris, did you have another question or comment?
Well, ju- just to, just to kind of build on what, what um, Curtis was saying is just if he, if he can simplify the drawing so that there's not so many colors, that would help us understand what is painted, what is not. A lot of the purple and the green don't really have to be purple and green, so that we can understand maybe in a color what's gonna be painted.
Or, yeah, just a comprehensive key.
Yeah, or a legend. There's just a lot going on in this drawing with a lot of overlapping boxes and text and so it's, it would be helpful for us to understand the drawing if it was less busy with color and um, overlapping content.
No problem. Uh, Rick?
Thank you. Yes, um, you've been talking about chains and how to, how to dress that up. You don't wanna tire rim. Um, and I agree with that. Over on the right of way, um, can somebody unzoom this a little bit, um, to go back a little? Okay, good. Along the right of way there, I'd like to see chains. We talked, I think at the last meeting, um, talked about maybe putting planters there or something like that, some sort of barriers. Um, but I think it'd be a good idea to do something like a chain, so it takes up less space. And I, I would like to have the same quality standards of the chain and whatever you're gonna use for posts on this side as you would for the other side going to one fourteen North Hampton Street.
Where? I'm confused about that.
Yeah, along the right of way, uh, again, Strathrow Properties is one, is the property that I own with my sister Leslie, and that's the Sernac Fuel Property. And you see where the ten foot right of way is there. Um.
Right, so the ten foot right of way is there, but it's, it's, it's designed by a, a surveyor so that both properties can go in and out the front, right?
Right.
So if, if you put chain link there, then the people coming in can't get across the chain link to get into the fuel, Sernac Fuel. And then if you put it on the other side, then the people that get into Sernac Fuel can't get out, or they have to use the Mountain View Street.
It's because you're missing a curb cut on here that they're, they're, you know, the traffic can go in one way and out the other in front of Sernac Fuel.
So, so Rick, you, you should clarify that with Todd, because my understanding here was that we were concerned, I mean, we wanna encourage customers to only go to the right when they come in, but that we still need to leave the left open so that customers of Sernac Fuel and people using that business will still be able to access from that side.
Right. That's not. If you put chains there, you can't.
Not something that you need, then I guess that's different, but that's been our understanding through the first two meetings, that that needs to be open.
Okay, what I'll do is um, we'll, we'll talk about that privately. And then if uh, if we can't resolve anything, I'll bring it up to the next meeting.
I can just, I can just add this for you, Rick, that the reason why that, that uh, right away, it works the way it does is because that other curb cut that you're talking about may not be legally there, because it's so close to the corner of Mountain View. So you wanna be careful not to assume that can be your out or in or whatnot. It might not even be legally there, there on paper.
Okay, interesting. Okay, all right. So you guys can talk about that. Uh, Jim?
Yes, thank you. Good, great points from everyone. Uh, looks like we're gonna be continuing this. I'm wondering what dates uh, you had in mind, Jeff or Curtis?
But I think we have December first available, but that's only a week away. I don't, I, I know, Todd, you wanna move quickly, but also a lot of people have a lot of stuff to do on this. So that might be too soon. I think. But also, a lot of people have a lot of stuff to do on this, so that might be too soon, I think the one after that would be the fifteenth, is that right, Jeff?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's better because December first is is Dunkin' Donuts and that's going to be a long meeting.
Yeah, good point, so I think the fifteenth is probably best.
Is that the first thing on our agenda?
On the first?
On the fifteenth.
I think it is, right, Jeff, there's nothing else on for the fifteenth yet?
Well.
Isn't Dunkin' Donuts getting?
Yeah.
They asked for a continuance or whatever.
They did, yes, it's a little bit of nuts and bolts, but the hearing next Tuesday was originally set for Dunkin' Donuts, but they've they had, it came in today. They have requested a continuation to the fifteenth. But I and and so it would be potentially this project in Duncan. I would, I would definitely suggest not continuing to next Tuesday. You know, this is a holiday week and there needs to be some discussions outside of this meeting and plan review and plan acceptance by Curtis and myself. And, you know, we, I, there's a lot of moving parts in in five days that I I'm uncomfortable.
If.
Really comfortable with the fifteenth, that would be great, I think that.
Since since Duncan hasn't continued yet, we could put this on at six on the fifteenth, at least to be the first item on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense to me, yeah.
Okay.
Does does that work, Cotton Ellen, does that work on your side, December fifteenth? Okay.
From my perspective, I'll make sure I have a draft decision at that point that we can. In the course of that meeting.
Was cut say, cut, you were saying something?
No, I was saying that does work, now, I had one last question, does anybody have any questions regarding? The traffic study, because I have Jeff Bandini from McMahon Associates here that can address any questions that could come up.
I didn't have anybody, any other planning board members questions about traffic?
Two percent increase overall seemed fairly minimal to me.
Any members of the public with a question about traffic? All right.
Oh, I have one, I have one, sorry. I just relative to the study, my recollection was that there was an observation that the shrubs, if you're pulling out. From Mountain View Way and looking to the right, that there were shrubs that could potentially obstruct the view. That needed to be pruned or maintained at some level. That's my recollection, ha- having reviewed that. It it may not, what I wanted to figure out is. If we consider that as a condition, whether whether the whether apple could. Whether there's some way to dictate that shrub to be maintained if it's not on any of the properties under. I see Mr. Pills raising his hand to that, so maybe there's a way to respond to addressing maintenance of a shrub that's on someone else's property. You know, as 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 you're bringing people out from out, so I think that was the only thing I saw in that parking study, that was a question to me.
Thanks, Jeff, Michael, you got something to add on this one?
Just that there's no property right, hopefully, eventually there'll be a comprehensive agreement. If the shrubs are within the right of way, then certainly as part of easement rights, we could trim. Brush, but if it's outside of the Mountain View sideline, then we have no control over it. That would be the property owner on the other side of of Mountain View Street, so I I, you know, I. I hope you wouldn't put in a condition that we 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 don't have a right to fulfill.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions before we continue this, Jeff Cernack?
Yeah, I don't believe there's any shrubs there.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, we we maintain that property for years and years and you have to go down. I think two or three hundred feet to the property line on the on the opposite end where there's, before there's any shrubbery.
Okay, great, Curtis?
Jeff Cernack, would you, I'm sorry, would you terribly mind just giving me your address?
Yes, it's, well, my 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 home address is twenty-nine Lost Lake Drive in Groton, Massachusetts.
Thanks, Jeff. Any other comments or questions before we continue this?
While we're still here in the spirit of Cots last commentary, where he was asking if anybody had questions regarding the. The traffic study, I also wanted to invite the board, if anybody has any questions regarding the legal memorandum. Attorney Pill, the author is present.
I I mean, I think, as I said at the beginning, I think that is certainly a concern for the applicant, but I'm not sure it impacts us, just because I think we're going to. This is going to be conditioned on the circulation.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to lead in anything there, it was literally just in the same spirit while we've got the what the author in the room, just wanted to make sure we had anything resolved.
All right.
I motion to continue the special permit for apple call on one or two North Hampton Street to December fifteenth at six o'clock.
Seconded.
All right, voting to continue to December fifteenth, Brenda.
Hi.
Austin.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
Harry.
Hi.
James.
Hi.
And I am an I, so we will see you all again on the fifteenth, thanks for everybody's help and cooperation on this one.
For the board.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
For the board members, just just, I I know that we talked about, I'm sorry, I just want to interject while I have you, while I have you. Though we talked about the request from Duncan to continue, but we also have the one twenty-one A. Application on December first, so I I will require, we will require you to come together. It will maybe relatively briefly on December first for for the other matter of the one twenty-one A.
All right. Jeff, that's all we want to do.
Just each other every Tuesday, but when if they are asking for a continuous to the fifteenth, can we, is it something that we can say we can do it on? January or do we do we have to say it, do we accept it on the fifteenth?
We can grant a continuance or deny a continuance, they're going to, they're going to, someone's going to appear on the first and ask us for a continuance. And we will decide whether to allow it or not and when to allow it to, if we do.
Thank you.
All right, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All right, Brenda.
Hi.
Austin.
Hi.
Harry.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
And I am an I, another wonderful night, folks, thanks so much, have a nice Thanksgiving.
All right, I'm going to stop the recording. I do want to stop.